I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 22nd, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of our community here tonight to observe important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have a number of items in the table file this evening, including some additional appointments, increased, decreased, changes in assignment, a leave of absence, and a resignation.
If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Cory. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is public comment, and we have four individuals who signed up, so I will call you up momentarily. This is our policy on public comment. This is an opportunity for residents, business, and/or property owners, parents, guardians, caregivers, students, and employees of the Northfield School District to address the board. All comments to the board must adhere to the guidelines set in place by District Policy 206 regarding public comment. This is not a time to debate an issue, but only for the board to hear your comments. You are prohibited from making comments about specific students, staff, and administrators. The board respects and values input, but when it relates to a specific individual or a specific matter, this input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, including the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. You will be gavelled out of order if your comments are not in compliance with these guidelines. Please address the board from the podium. After being recognized by the chair, identify yourself, and if you represent a group. We require that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You are not allowed to yield your time to another person. It is expected that members of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. Personal attacks on anyone addressing the board are unacceptable. The board has allotted up to a total of 30 minutes for public comment at regular school board meetings. I'll now begin to call those who have signed up to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Cory Butler will be monitoring the speaker's time. He will signal each speaker with the time they have remaining at one minute, 30 seconds, and 10-second intervals. Please make your remarks as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes. First person to call up will be Karen Mater with Be Smart for Kids. Welcome, Karen.
I'm back. You all know who I am. I've had my kids graduated from here. I'm excited about and hopeful, I guess, because I was included and invited to a meeting at Dr. Hillman's office this week, where about 10 of us got together to discuss gun violence, and there's some very exciting student initiative that's involved. My piece is making sure that the adult responsibility piece is still side by side, I guess. So Be Smart for Kids, I reached out to all of the PTO elementary school leadership people in email to see if at their next meetings, their fall meetings, I could, you know, somebody could present a short thing about Be Smart for Kids. And then the other thing I've done is I've reached out to Sarah Swan McDonald, and Jennifer Lompart, and Erin Johnson, and Tessa from Torch, because I've invited, you know, students to join me at the Enough to End Gun Violence Plays. They are written by students in the spring. They're submitted. They're chosen. So there's six 10-minute plays that are presented, and they're doing it in four places in Minnesota this year. On Monday, October 6th, you don't have a meeting? I'd be happy to take any of you. At the Landmark Center, at Hopkins Stages, in Marshall, Minnesota, and in Dilworth, which was just added. So it's, it's just giving a voice to students. So there's many, many avenues that are being sort of reached out to. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Cece Lindstrath. Welcome.
My name is Cece Lindstrath. I live at 408 Lockwood Drive. I am here representing Age Friendly Northfield. Age Friendly Northfield is supported by the generosity of taxpayers, to enhance the quality of life of the 30% of our community residents who are over 50. For something to be supported by Age Friendly Northfield, it must have four pillars. It must have a physical activity. I'm going to drive you crazy going in and out with my bobble head here. It must have a socialization component. It must be free, and it must be done in cooperation with another organization. The last time that I was here, I came to let you know about the wonderful collaborations that Age Friendly Northfield was doing with community education. These collaborations have continued to be mentioned in your quarterly brochures. These include free Sunday pickleball at the high school. Last year, we had 644 members playing at the high school on Sundays. We've done Nordic walking, regular walking at the high school, and a new proposal with Community Ed that calls for partnerships between older adults and middle school students. Age Friendly Northfield has participated over the last year in meetings organized to develop both the physical plan and the concept of a community gym. The plan for the actual community gym you will see tonight, it is great. The gym will provide for many great physical opportunities in a beautiful setting. We are thrilled. The walking track is just what the community needs for our older adults and anyone with any kind of mobility concerns, for safe and free walking during Minnesota's varied weather conditions. It's in a beautiful setting with only a little over seven full laps for a mile. However, the next discussions will be more complicated as we develop the concept of a community gym and a schedule for the community place. AFN knows these discussions will be new ground for all of us, requiring creativity, flexibility, and compromise. We are looking for a way to blend our views. Please remember statements made during the referendum campaign that the older adults wouldn't get the leftovers. Your stewardship and our votes have brought us a tremendous opportunity for the many members of our community, over 30 and otherwise, for this great facility to be used in meaningful ways. Thank you.
Next we have Carla Johnson.
Haven't done this in a long time. Dr. Hillman, school board members, my name is Carla Johnson. I live at 2014 Grant Drive. I currently serve as the interim executive director of 50 North, representing 2,200 members we serve through fitness programs, social activities, and educational opportunities. I'm also a taxpayer who voted yes on all three of the referendum issues, questions for the Reimagine Project in the fall of 2024. My son graduated from Northfield Schools. My granddaughter is now in ninth grade at the high school. And with another grandchild on the way, my family's connection to this district will continue for years to come. I've seen the plans. They are beautiful. Part of me wishes I was that newly coming into the world little creature to be part of that school. In reviewing 50 North records, I found documentation from 2024 when the city, Northfield Schools, Community Education, the YMCA, and 50 North met to explore collaboration. At that time, the expanded gym was still referred to as a fieldhouse. Most compelling was a statement attributed to Dr. Hillman, and I'm just going to share that with you. "The goal: Operate a fieldhouse attached to the high school that also serves 50 North's members. All Northfield School gyms are full from 3 o'clock to 10 o'clock PM daily with varsity athletics. The district is seeking partners to make best use of a new fieldhouse space, which would include four full-side basketball courts, lines for pickleball, and an indoor track. Half of this gym space and the track would be available to 50 North members, the community, from 5:30 AM to 2:30 PM, and sometimes on weekends. School security, member check-in process, would need to be addressed." Those ideas came together within the Reimagine Campaign. As the Reimagine referendum was put together, these items were not just an internal discussion. They were a selling point to the community. A public flyer that was distributed at one of the meetings about the referendum at 50 North said, "It will also expand access for community indoor activities like pickleball and a walking track." 30 seconds. "We fully recognize that student safety and security are paramount. At the same time, we ask to be at the table as those issues are addressed. Programming for the expanded gym can and should balance the needs of students with the health and wellness needs of the community members, particularly seniors who supported this referendum. I respectfully urge the school board and administration to honor the promise of expanded community access rather than treating it as an afterthought. Current presentations and conversation that suggest limited hours and a closed-off walking track create the impression that Northfield seniors are being overlooked as valuable partners." Thank you.
Our last commenter tonight is Andreas Turnheer.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Andreas Turnheer. And as usual, I have a little bit concern with your project. And one of the concern is we have bike lanes here in town. And my question is, are we not connecting the schools to the bike lanes? I mean, this is a city question. It's a city question for you. And I would say, this should be, should be in there as well, that we are thinking about that, that people are walking or biking to school. The other thing is the building. Why we need 16 to 18 km for each wing is unnecessary. It's just more envelope space or area, and that means you have much higher area of heat or dissipation or heat gain over the day. That means you need more cooling or heating capacity in your geothermal system. And this is for me a concern. The other thing is your window curtain walls on the entry side and the courtyard. These are large areas where you have now value about four and a half to five. If you have a triple pan, if you have a dual pan, which is standard in this country, you have about a value of four R value, which is very low. And you will have condensation. That means, again, you need baseboard heaters actually to keep these walls ice-free and condensation-free. It's also an energy concern. The other thing is the energy usage intensity of that building we have right now is about 70. You know that from the handout I had, and also from the studies the consultants did for you. I would say, for a rebuild like this, we should aim for 45 kilobit per square foot per year, which is easy attainable. I mean, the Rockford, one of the Virginia projects which you have seen actually has demonstrated that to get at least a 15% savings with very little effort. So I would like to see that too, but this is one thing you have to set as a goal for the design team, else they're not going to do this. And that's why I ask, is this possible to go better than 45 kilobit per square foot per year on the design? Thank you for the considerations.
All right, our next item is announcements and recognitions, which I hear there are none tonight. Okay? And now we move on to our items for discussion and reports. And first up, we have the DYC District Youth Council update with co-chairs Delphine Hawkins and Atticus Mayer updating the board about their '25-'26 school year plans. Welcome, Atticus.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. So as she said, my name is Atticus Mayer. I'm a senior at Northfield High School, and I'm one of the two co-chairs, my friend Delphine Hawkins, on Northfield's District Youth Council. So today, I'll be presenting the District Youth Council's '25-'26 update. And I don't know if you can hear, but I'm a little sick, so I'll try to not make that affect too much. So first off, for those unfamiliar with what DYC is, the purpose of District Youth Council is to ensure a meaningful connection between the student body and the school board. So what this means is that every DYC member serves on a district committee. I myself am entering my third year on the policy committee. And also, every DYC member attends at least one school board meeting per semester, and every DYC member works on a DYC subcommittee, which I'll go into more details about later. Then lastly, throughout the school year, DYC hosts a multitude of events to connect the students of NHS with the school board and vice versa. So what do, what do these aforementioned DYC events look like in the past? Well, during the 2024-2025 school year, we organized the Reimagine Northfield High School Referendum Forum, where we presented the details of the NHS referendum on last year's ballot to students. We also organized the School Board Candidate Forum, where school board members seeking election or reelection presented their cases to the NHS student body. We also held our annual School Board Brunch, which gives the members of DYC and the school board a chance to introduce and interact with one another. We also had a budget, we also held a budget reduction forum, where we presented last school year's budget cuts to the student body. And one more event we organized was the mentor product distribution that takes, that takes place annually at the high school. So what will DYC look like this year? We will have 17 members. As I mentioned before, the co-chairs are myself and Delphine. Like last year, we will have two subcommittees, Student Relations, which, Student Relations, which will be led by Audrey Gilbertson, and Board Relations, whose lead will be Genevieve Knudsen. Like the name implies, Student Relations will handle relaying information to the student body and obtaining information from the student body about disrelated subjects. Board Relations will handle obtaining information from the school board and the high school administration, and also relaying information from the school, from the student body to the school board. Also, another big update, Emily Culver will be the new adult advisor for District Youth Council, replacing Martha Lund Dean, who held the position for the last few years. A few, a few potential events we look forward to this year include events relating to the new administration group we have this year, with an entire new principal in Mr. Dibble, and a whole new position in the dean of students held by Mr. Dubé. It's important that the students understand the changes in the admin team and get a chance to meet the new administrators. So also, we look to possibly add, in addition to the Northfield Public Schools website, or even DYC Focalized website, in order to expand our reach to an even larger audience. And our next, and most possibly, and possibly our largest potential project, is the reintroduction of the Student Pledge Against Gun Violence. This was introduced back in 1996 as an effort to prevent student gun violence at the source. And since 1996, this pledge has lost its usage across the country. But recently, talks of bringing this, the pledge back to Northfield have been had, and the originator of the pledge, Mary Louise Groh, who has many connections to Northfield, has joined the conversation to bring it back. So to be clear, this pledge is purely a commitment to gun responsibility and safety. It makes no comment on the Second Amendment rights. Along with the previously mentioned DYC events, we also have our two annual events, in the School Board Brunch and the Period Product Distribution. So lastly, I'd like to go over our goals for this year. So this first point, there are still plenty of questions involving the budget cuts from last year and Reimagine NHS topics, which are being asked by NHS students, so to even further broaden their knowledge of these subjects. Yeah, okay. So to even further broaden their knowledge of these subjects is very important. Another goal we have is expanding DYC's reach on social media to ensure our information can reach as many students as possible. And now, along with the student body, we at DYC would like to integrate the entire Northfield community, members, Northfield community into our reach. This goal goes back to the DYC website, or addition to the NPS website we previously mentioned, which, which we believe will help parents and other community members access the information that we provide. Lastly, we would like to begin to utilize the tabling resource that occurs during flex at the high school. It's a great opportunity to reach students who wouldn't otherwise look into DYC, or take the time out of the day to attend one of our events. So I really appreciate the opportunity to present in this school board meeting, and that this district has such a focus on evolving student voice. With that being said, I'd like to open this presentation up for any questions involving DYC and this presentation.
Excellent. Thank you, Atticus. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you, Atticus, for taking over a leadership role in this group. And looking through everything you did last year, it's, I'm blown away by how involved you all were, on top of being full-time students and doing all of that, so, and all your other activities. So thanks to you and your group. I think a lot happened last year. You were very helpful, connecting the board to the students and helping explain things. So we really appreciate that, and I look forward to interacting with you and seeing what your group does this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Anyone else question or comment? Cory?
I'll just echo what Amy said. I really commend the DYC for their engagement over the years, and particularly last year, there was a lot of big topics in play. And I'm not sure I've spent more time at the high school during the day in any given year than last year. And it was good to see all those events were well attended by students and really well engaged. And even like the handouts for candidates was great, so I appreciate the extra steps there to make sure students knew what was going on at the high school, going on at the bond, and going on with the election. I'm curious for this year, as the leader of this group now, what are you hoping for DYC this year? I know you have the goals laid out for the organization, but for yourself, what do you hope come May that you have accomplished?
That's a great question. So personally, I think I would, I would like to see that almost every student in Northfield High School knows what, knows what DYC is. And that's, that's a pretty hard goal to achieve, but I think it is very important that they know that we are a resource, and we are available if they have any questions, and they can approach me or anybody else in DYC in the halls and ask one of these questions. So I think that's one of my main hopes and dreams for this year. Another one, I'll go back to the piece I said in the goals about integrating community members into our reach. We've had community members reach out. That's part of where the, where those, that's part of where the Student Pledge Against Gun Violence came into play. A community member reached out to Emily, I believe, and Dr. Hillman. And so we are going to be integrated in that process, and I'm really excited for that. So yeah, so just expanding our reach to more people and making sure more people know what we are, what we are and what we are doing. Thanks, Atticus. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Jenny?
Thank you for the presentation and all of the information. My question is, how do you obtain information or exchange information with the student body? Like, what, what methods do you use?
Yeah. So in the past, we've used a lot of, we did a lot of forums, and we also did a lot of Google Forms. So especially the big one with the, I think it was, I think it was two years ago, we did a big forum that we presented, I think it was during CCR, and it had students list their complaints and list what they liked about the current school building and whatnot. So we were able to take that information and present it. I think we presented it to the school board. Maybe we just presented it to a forum. Yeah, so that was our main way of collecting information this year. As I said in the hopes and dreams part, there's a great tabling resource that DYC has not utilized in the past, which happens during the lunch period flex, where, you know, students walking, or we can sit a couple of members of DYC in like the middle, between the cafeterias, and let students learn more information about what we are presenting and what we do, and any events we are taking care of there, so. And I think we're going to use that resource to gather a lot of information as well in this upcoming year, so I'm very excited to see how that works out.
Thank you. Amy?
I'm just wondering if Emily Culver is here? I haven't met her yet. Hi, Emily. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you leading this group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Atticus.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we have a little bit of an issue with that connection to the screen. So Tim, just before the high school presentation, is going to reboot the camera system. So we'll just take just 90 seconds or so, or a couple of minutes. So you can hold on for just one second, and Tim's going to reboot the system.
... district and staff. The strategic commitments that you'll see me highlight most today, you'll see there's a letter "N" on the, the little Northfield logo there. Though the people, the learner outcomes, and the communication are really what this, what our goals and our highlights deal with. We do deal with all, or work with all the strategic commitments, but people, learner outcomes, and communication is what you will see the most. Similarly, when we talk about the district benchmarks, we're going to make you, let you see that all students are connected to the community, that they exhibit physical, social, emotional well-being. They're going to graduate from high school with a plan to reach their full potential. We're going to have happy, productive employees, and we're going to make sure that our parents are connected to the school, district, in the district and in the building. So today, I'm going to share a few success stories with you. We're going to identify the goals that we've laid out for this year. We're going to show you how we align with the strategic plan I just went over. Inspire adult actions that make learning better for our students, and make sure that all of our efforts are aligned, again, to prepare every student for lifelong success. And take a look at that awesome link crew this year who ran a fantastic program for our incoming ninth-grade students. So the highlights I'll go over is the attendance goal of 73.9% to 82% by the end of last year, an increase in credit attainment for our free and reduced lunch population, and then a plan for college and career readiness as we work forward. These are the three goals that were developed for last year's plan. In terms of attendance, we really wanted to concentrate on that free and reduced population over the last four-year period from '22 to '25. You'll notice a pretty good jump there, 62 to 74 to 80 in the last three years. 80% is a good number. It's not good enough. We want to be over that 90% mark. However, the chronically absent students you'll see dropping every year with 20% last year. Of those 250 students, 200 were given individual mentors last year as a way to try to combat the new, or the, the problem we've seen since the pandemic of students just not coming to school or attending classes. Of those 200 students who received mentors, 76 were able to get off of the intervention, which means they were no longer chronically absent. That's a huge step forward, thanks to the, the staff that we have in place. We can remember, we talked about things of aligning and getting stuff ready. One of the plans that we had in place to take some of the workload off of teachers with the new expectations were to kind of eliminate the mentor program. However, as you'll see in a couple of goals from now, we can't fight data. Data showed us that this program worked really well, and we did bring that program back, and it's running this year with, with fidelity already in the first few weeks. So that is our update on that goal for attendance. Not there yet, but growth is important. Another one is attaining credits, making sure students are on track to graduate. You'll notice that our overall free and reduced population in those years from '21 up has moved from 73% to 87%, which is a good growth. We did note that the 2% drop in all students in credit attainment. And so we started the process of developing a credit retention plan where you don't have to necessarily, if you miss by a couple of points, make up the entire credit, but focus on those priority standards that you didn't get as a student. The goal over the summer was to try to win back 75 to 80 credits. The number on the screen is 114.25. That's how many credits were attained in the summer programming working with the ALC. That's a huge win for our students who are behind in graduation credits. The final goal was to focus on that college and career readiness and engagement in the classroom. You'll see a whole list here of, you know, your standard high school credit, your concurrent enrollment, advanced placement, PSEO options in the St. Olaf and Carlton Honors Program. All of these are designed to give students a chance to not only earn high school credit, but to expand their offerings. And we have a couple of plans to move forward in place that Dr. Hillman and I have been discussing already to get more students into that work-based learning program as we move forward. The other piece for engagement last year was the big cellphone protocol or policy that we put in place to try to get students to refocus on being engaged in the classroom. And so you'll see that stoplight as that indicator. We did add a little data here, and I went over this at my staff meeting this afternoon. You'll notice the two big green circles on the left. That makes a total of 91% of staff who were satisfied or very satisfied with the way the rollout went. The last time we had a 91% success rate in any school was a long, long time ago. I don't know if it's ever happened. But we have, we're going to try to find those four people who didn't like it and see what we can do a little bit better. But 91% rollout is very well done. And so our, our students are more engaged in class, and we're making sure that they're there. The one on the right is the student response. Anything to the left means that they thought they were less, paying less attention in class, and anything to the right is those that were more, paying more attention in class. Well, you can kind of see that bell-shaped curve there is. you can kind of see that bell-shaped curve there is tilted to the right, which is exactly what we wanted to see. That 50% range in the middle, it's tough to get a student to pick a side sometimes. And if it was positive not to be engaged, you don't necessarily want to admit that. So, a positive growth here for us is, is big news, and we know that by talking to our students, they understand that that cellphone policy is helping them engage in class, and that is, it's a very beneficial part of moving forward. And we have continued that plan as, as was, and we are rolling forward with it with even better engagement and follow-up. So, for this year's goals, I mentioned the absences. We are going to continue forward and try to get 90% of our students here 90% of the time. Eliminate those chronically absent students to less than 10%. To do that, we are going to continue that mentor program that we started last year. There's already 100 students receiving mentorship services already this year based on attendance from last, from the fourth quarter of last year. We've expanded our problem-solving team to include attendance, behavior, and academic intervention, so we can try to get the whole student involved in that process, as opposed to picking out grades for one, attendance for one, and some behavior for one. We want to make sure that we're, we're meeting the needs of students all the way across the board. We're going to align with the, we already are aligned with the district-wide attendance guidelines to keep the school vocabulary K-12 or pre-K to post-12 in, in the same, using the same language. So, parents know from the very beginning how important attendance is, and we have, getting our students in the building. And we thank the work of Dr. Sean Dubay and Melissa Hansen and Carrie Duba to make sure that those strategies we have to make our students connect with our school a prevalent part of every day. In our, in our second action step, we are going to concentrate on utilizing those high-impact teaching strategies or hits to, to meet the district alignment of 80% proficiency on all priority standards. To do this, we are going to work with our staff members and teachers to change those adult behaviors that we know will strategically allow students to be more engaged. Those high-impact strategies are things like using physical movement in the classroom, knowing every student's name, tapping into former knowledge banks of the students, setting up lessons so we don't outrun the student's attention span in these 43-minute classes, making sure our activities are changing. Another discussion we're having is in regards with rigor. Rigor was a big piece of last year's development, but we're gonna look at it even more and make sure that if we have a 4.0 student, that they're not getting a 15 on the ACT. We gotta make sure that our classes are well-structured, so the learning that takes place is also reflected in those national expectations of like AP and ACT classes. More hands-on learning to energize the student engagement and to make our students more successful. The last piece was here in response to the employee experience survey at the end of last year. I connected these two together for this goal, because what happened at the end of last year is a lot of our employees felt with the new building information going on, and with talking about rigor and with the hit strategies, that maybe we were too spread thin. And so, as part of this, the resource that we're going to focus in on is that resource of time. Our teachers work really hard every day to develop relationships with our students and to make sure that they're getting a quality product in front of the classroom. By focusing on those hits, we can bring all that together into one, we put the arch over the top and bring everything together to make sure that our employees not only feel valued, but that their time is honored to give them the best benefit in improving their, improving the product they put in front of our students every day. And our last goal has to do with communication. The, this, this is a slide I showed not only at our staff meetings, but also at the parent meeting and at the student meeting. We have three key tools that we use for communication. And as teachers and admin, we have gone through the use of these three tools to make sure that they are used in an appropriate way. Skyward is our location that houses our correct gradebooks, attendance, and discipline records. Schoology is where we park our classroom resources, show off, show off the curriculum, build calendars, and where teachers can talk to students either in groups or one-on-one. Talking Points, which is our text messaging service, deals really heavily in the family communication, one-to-one contact with parents, and then full-class announcements, so the parents know what is going on in the classrooms. As someone coming in, I've, I've seen the first two. Talking Points is new to me. Texting is where it's at. That's where we get our biggest bang for the buck on reaching our parents. Talking Points allows that text message back and forth for parents, and it also is able to be monitored by another person. When someone sends a Talking Point, I see that as well. So, if there's any, anything going back and forth that the administration needs to see, we know that that's there. And so, the teachers and administration are working hard to make sure that all these communication methods are well-rounded in reaching the people they need to reach. We will also be adding this year from the parent survey is that more positivity being sent home. We just kicked off a spreadsheet today that's gonna show every time a, a teacher sends a positive message home, we're gonna track that and try to get all 1,223 students currently in our building at least one positive message, if, if not more, on the, getting out to all of them. Very often, a parent only gets those calls that are, hey, I'm missing this, missing that. We want to make sure we're celebrating everything those students do each and every day. With that, it quickly gets through our three highlights and our three goals, and we are open to any questions you have. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Right, board members, do you have any questions for Chris or for Amy?
Well, first of all, welcome, Chris. We're so happy to have you, and I'm very impressed with your energy. That gives me, like, I know you're gonna take this high school and do amazing things with it. So, thank you for bringing all that energy with you. I have two questions for you, and I have one for Rico, because I don't want Rico just to stand there all night. So, my first question for you, Chris, is when we are looking at the college and career readiness, different program opportunities, I'm wondering if you could tell me how many students participate in the different options?
Absolutely. Last year, in the AP spot, we had 343 students take 570 AP exams. So, that's over a quarter of the school population took them, and 75% did score three or better on those AP exams. So, that's that. Our concurrent enrollment or the college in the schools, we had 240 students take one or more of those concurrent enrollments classes, and that's this year, currently this year. And 67 of our students have enrolled in one or more PSEO classes in a day.
And, okay, and there's none, nobody at St. Olaf and Carlton right now?
I think, I think in talking to Mark today, it was one or two.
Okay, but that's still an option.
Yep, and that's an honors program. That's a little bit different than any of those, but it's, it's a small number, but we hope it grows.
Okay. Well, that's my first question. And my second question is, thank you. I'm really happy to see we have so much engagement.
Yes, we do.
When all those different programs. That's fantastic. My second question is about the mentors. How are they chosen, and how do you connect them up with the students? And could you just talk a little bit more about the mentors?
Yep. The, where we tried to start first this year was try to get that first-hour teacher. Is there a first-hour teacher that aligns with the student that's scheduled for first hour, so we can see right away if they're there? From there, we see how many students, you know, no teacher's gonna have more than one at this time, or one, one to two, to make sure that there's not, it's not overburdened too much. But usually, the first-hour teacher is gonna build that relationship.
Makes sense.
I think value in relationships, I think last year, too, we, we took requests, really. I, that's my kid. I want to work with them, and that is probably priority when you're working with attendance with kids.
Okay, Rico, stay there for a moment. You know, I just want to have an update from you, Rico. I know in the past, you've talked to us about disciplinary issues and worked to minimize those. And I, I'm just sort of a general question for you. Do you have any thoughts or updates for us?
I think we built an attendance system with checks throughout absences that we are seeing unexcused and, and excused, really reaching out to that family. So, for example, I mean, we will bring families in at six unexcused absences and really sit down and develop a plan that is visual for them, that we can share with them, and we found that to be highly successful. I just, layering support, I just got back from MN, MTSS meeting at Compass in Rochester, which was really eye-opening. So, to really think about the other big nine schools and how they are thinking of their systems and how this MTSS is fitting within that system, we're really light-years ahead of them with our DLT, with our site leadership team as well. We're just doing outstanding things to layer kids up, and parents see that. And that's the perception that they have, and their, their child is well-supported. And I'm just excited about the work groups. I'm excited about SEL is a big thing with educating the whole child. So, SEL is gonna be, yeah, social emotional learning, right? That's gonna be a big push next with our MN, MTSS going forward with our, with our district and our site. So, exciting things to come.
Thank you both.
Jeff, did you have a question?
Chris, welcome to the district.
Thank you, sir.
And as alumni and going back ways here, being on the board, and I just had this conversation with Matt, and he looked up a lot of, you know, with math and reading and a lot of, you know, how well the district ranks, you know, out of, was it three, how many, was it three? 325 districts. So, I, I, I think that that's great. Kind of my personal opinion and what's kind of where we've kind of been over time, and this is even going back to my days here, is that I, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, obviously, you have to set an expectation to get results, and I think that we want every student to be motivated to be lifetime learners and critical thinkers. And I, I just think that there's no reason, and I think even over time, and I'm extremely biased because I graduated from here, you know, it's just like, I, I look at these numbers and how we compare ourselves, and it's nice statewide to look at that, too, but more out of the, you know, never name your conference, the big nine, where there's actually 12 teams or whatever. So, so there's 12 in the, in the big nine, right? 12 teams?
For now.
Yeah, for now.
There's nine communities, though. Nine communities, 12 high schools.
Nine communities, 12 high schools. So, I would say, and my point is, is then you can comment on this, you know, and I really kind of compare myself because I'm very competitive within the conference. I mean, we really want to be, really do really well in the conference academically, so much other things compared to that. So, what do you see, and what is your, long question, what do you see about Northfield and just on the ability, because we are really an education town, and how do you, I mean, what, what, what do you think you can necessarily do to improve that, and then how were you kind of impressed to see that? Or maybe you weren't impressed, but I think it's pretty impressive on, on a lot of the numbers. So, just kind of your, your comment on the academics of Northfield, kind of what our history is, and we're high, high achievement on academics, and kind of, you know, what are some things that you see that we do well, and maybe we could do better or continue what we're doing?
Yeah. From, from the, this is my third big nine district. So, I've been Fairbourn, Albert Lee before coming here. And the, the first thing I see is a whole bunch of support from the board, from the community, from parents that really want to see their, their kids do good things. You support teachers. There, there's two ways you can treat teachers. You can support them, or you can ask them to do more and more and more, and fight with what they're doing, or fight necessarily, but not, not be fully supportive. I see a lot of support in this community from the, from the colleges and from, you know, everyone here. The fact that you're, that the, your, our, our MCA participation rates are so high. The opt-out of MCAs in other communities is huge. At, when I was in Albert Lee, we had more than half of our kids opting out, and it was the kids who were sick of testing, our high-flying ACT kids. And so, that support piece is big, showing that the testing is important, to show that we know what we know, and then to help teachers rebuild back, you know, get the information we need to be better at our jobs. The other thing that I see Northfield doing is this new English and math curriculum that are getting put into place. We're not status, we're not, we're not happy with the status quo. We want to find out what best practices are out there and make sure that our kids are getting the best possible curriculum that's out there. And I know math is starting that process. This year, English is, is already in process, and watching the support that those teams have is not something you see in every community or school district.
Chris, welcome. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Well done. Actually, I have a question or two for Rico. As the constant, good to see you again, as the constant from last year's administration to this year, I have a couple questions for you. Obviously, great highlights. I'm glad to hear those numbers. I'm curious what you were most proud of from last year.
I think COVID taught us a lot, a lot of things, and I think, I think the systems were there, just not working in right order. And I'm very proud of the heavy lift that Shane Beck and I did for three years. And I guess the culture that was changed at that high school was huge, not only just with students, but with staff, too. Adult behaviors, we're talking, we're concentrating on that, and we have a great foundation to continue and soar with that as well. So, just the system work and what we did for three years.
Yeah, and continue on that point, because how do you carry that forward? I've seen this shining high right now.
Yeah.
Dr. Dubay is gonna do well.
Yeah, can I give a shout-out to Dr. Sean Dubay? I know that budget reductions and with my team last year was very hard, and at point four in the classroom with point six, I think he's done a magnificent, magnificent job, and it's only been a month. I called Matt the other day and said he's, he's just killing it, knocking out of the, out of the, the park here. So, but I think education is bake, borrow, and steal, and I think we have a, an expert right here that is well-versed in many experiences. I think he brings a previous district I had experience with Marzano, and I think he's gonna bring that and fit that within our system now with, with Kim Marshall currently and high-impact teaching strategy. So, I think there's a lot to be learned by Chris, and, and I think he's sitting back and kind of looking right now, but I think it's coming around, and you're just gonna see the systems here just take off even higher.
Thank you. Good luck. You both this year.
Hey, Ben.
Well, thank you both, and I've got a quick question, one, one to start with in the weeds, and I just wanted to say thank you to Rico, you know, I think you and Shane and Beck did a great job last spring, rounding the corner with the budget reductions. And so, this ties into that a little bit. When we look at highlight number three and kind of that college and career readiness piece, this question's a little bit down in the weeds, but, you know, when we look at obviously a reduction in the number of school counselors, I think, you know, from last year, and then we have Raider time, and then we kind of look at earlier college admissions cycles, too, so more and more colleges, you know, kind of have a November 1st application date. How are we using the resources that we have to also kind of align with Raider time, college readiness for that early application cycle? Or is that something that's on our radar, or?
I got, I'll take it. Yeah. The, the counselors we have do amazing work, and they have been able to refocus and put a timeline together to catch all of that. The Raider time schedule's done throughout the year, so they, they know what's coming and when it's coming. I know we've already talked, the pre-ACT and PSAT planning are going next Thursday or next Tuesday as part of Raider time for our 10th and 11th grade students. So, I think the work they've done, they, they know what's coming, and they've been able to timeline that out, so we don't miss anything like that.
Has really helped with understanding. I have a senior right now, and wow, I've leaned on our counselors, too, to kind of check timelines, and I think kids are more confident navigating that. It's more out in the open. And then, I think with Raider time, I think it's, we're really concentrating on each grade level being privy to that grade level and what the kids need, because in the past, it's always been just kind of one-size-fits-all, and, you know, we won't 100% attendance at Raider time. So, it's really hard to shut down flex for a whole hour on Tuesday. Kids really, oh, we got Raider time, but it's kind of up now because it's applicable. Kids are seeing things that are delivered to them that's gonna be applicable, not only now, but post-secondary as well.
You also have the fact that not only are they divided by last name, but for all the kids, but they're also taking grade-level jobs. And so, you know, Cory's in charge of what the ninth graders are doing. Deb's taking AP with 10 and 11, and Mark's in charge of the 12th grader, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can I give a shout-out to Cory, too, just hit the ground running at the high school, too? I mean, we had to cut AP. We had to cut a counselor, and that's a great team. She's been here a long time, and I've already worked with her on a few issues, and I can't wait. She's amazing.
And then, Chris, just another question for you. I think you may have touched on some of this, but is there anything that's surprised you, incoming to the high school, kind of stood out for you that you weren't expecting?
I think the biggest surprise is that kids are kids. No matter what community you go to, there's still, even though I can look around and I don't know a single face, but I see kids that I met before. In, they're different people, but the groups are still there, and they still say six, seven too much, and they, they, kids are kids. And so, I was, felt a little more comfortable. I'd say the first month and a half felt not as comfortable. I mean, Matt was very welcoming, worked with me a lot, but until you get back to work and you, like, when the staff came back, I was like, okay, this is the staff. They're, they're adult humans who are very good with kids and build good relationships. And the kids come back, you're like, okay, I, I know this now. This is, this feels really familiar and comfortable. So, in terms of that surprise, coming from one big high school to another, it is more similar than different, but there are key differences, too. You know, just like I said, that the community support has been unbelievable here. It's much appreciated.
Welcome, and thank you to you both. We look forward to an excellent evening.
Jenny, did you have a comment question?
Yes. Thanks, Claudia. And thank you both for the information, and also welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, the word interventions was mentioned a lot here in this report. And I know the mentoring is one example, but can you give any other examples of other interventions?
Yeah, I, I think our SSC is statewide recognized with Ellen Muha and her team is a huge structured study hall support for kids who feel comfortable and safe. And it's, it's always open to anyone that needs access to that. Outside of that, with flex, we have a tier two intervention called super flex that we're really proud of. That we strategically place staff members there for academic purposes. It can either be a single day where the kids are struggling with something and academically. And they are put into super flex in the media center where there are, there's a system of check-in. Teachers, teachers will sign them up for that day. We have a counselor that, that checks them in, gets them all ready to go. And we have six content specialist teachers there to get them one-to-one help. Sometimes the academic problems are a little bit more and require a kind of a more rigorous type of help. So there's ongoing and that's ongoing until that grade does go up. And then the teacher can say, yep, Rico, Chris, counselors, super flex team will take them off. We're good to go. And that does so much for SEL, for students, built in supports, just layering. That, that's what we were talking with parents is have been really appreciative. I do have two in high school right now that do not have that built in support right now. So they're doing the traditional, uh, talk to your teacher and go before class or stay after class. And that's really hard. It's, it's a wonderful thing that we have going on for those, that intervention, Jenny. Sorry. Tim?
Let me, let me hit that flex a little bit. That's different than any school I've been in. And three weeks in here, it's remarkable how well this system works. The way those students can get support, the way those students can have an hour to eat, have some downtime, get some uptime if they need it. A system that when it was being told about me, I just had to sit back and watch. And it's, it's a fantastic system with great teachers, again, great kids and well planned out, a well planned out schedule by Rico and Sean.
I just want to make note that just the staff is amazing because we have to have every square inch, did I do something again? We have to have almost every square inch of that building supervised when you have 1,200 kids that are kind of at large going through. A lot of the seniors do leave for open campus because we do have open campus. But we strategically place at kind of hotspots around the high school. And you will see teachers there with their carts, with their computers, and they will provide academic support in the hallway with lots of kids just running by. You'll see one-to-one. So they even built in, they even built in their own academic time with kids, even though they're on a supervisory type of platform. Then obviously we have intervention in the classrooms too. We build time during flex for that. So it's just, it's a big recess built around academic support, layered support.
And then I wanted to visit the, the student device, the new policy a little bit because I know that you had mentioned it. I, I attended the, the, the cell phone roundtable discussion last year with Senator Ellis Mann. And we had a lot of teachers, staff, students and community members and parents that attended. It was very, very well attended. I don't, I think every chair was taken. And so it's obviously a very critical element that was posing some issues in our district. And so I'm, I'm really proud that we, you know, some took the bull by the horns and, and got into that. But my question is, I remember at that roundtable discussion that there was a student there, a high school student. And, and this was before the policy, you know, went into effect. And, and he said that he's nervous that the enforcement part of it would be an issue. And, and I guess the, the positive thing about that is that we have very smart students at our high school because his prediction came true. Because I noticed that you mentioned that there, there are some issues with enforcement. Can you just kind of discuss a little bit about what those, that issue stems from? And maybe what is still needed in order to help bring solutions?
Yeah, I, I think Chris touched on this a little bit, well, maybe today in our staff meeting is that we need to be universal in expectations across the board. Because enforcing it in one side of the high school versus the other side, word travels and kids know that, kids know. So the adult actions, right? We're not going to really change student behavior until we change adult behavior and be able to understand that, you know, this is the red light and this is something that the staff has all agreed on. So those are the issues. And you see issues that related to that. Sometimes kids are let out of class early. Well, we have to go bell to bell and that's kind of an expectation. But I, I also think that we're combating that Jenny, because the last two, two years, year and a half, that has taken priority. So when there has been an office and this, office discipline referral that has come in right away, and then we see it's a cell phone, we drop everything and we go immediately to that. And we think of, a lot of people might think punitive, no. And, and I don't think it's punitive, but cell phones are never going to go away. But we have to think restoratively with kids and give them the guidance and the skills to be able to understand that academics come first. But you got to have that skill to put that away. Every Monday morning on announcements, I, I do the pledge of leaves. I do a few beginning of the week announcements, but the biggest thing that teachers have actually loved that I say is, okay, kids, it's time to turn off their cell phones. Take your earbuds out, turn them off, put them in the backpack, zip them up and give your attention to those outstanding staff members up there instructing you. And that has, that has kind of lifted the morale of, of teachers because it's a battle. It can be a battle and this has been a battle that we fought for years with, with cell phones to the point where some teachers just give up and let it happen. But we're in this together. We know what we have to do and, and hold everyone accountable. Have those hard conversations with staff members that, that need that help or need that guidance to have those hard conversations with kids about putting phones away. So.
And then I also wanted to touch into the, you had mentioned some of the naviance and the Raider Time, some of the subjects. One in here is the career curriculum that is shared during Raider Time. Can you give some examples of what that career curriculum is?
We'll have to get back to you on that. Mark has really worked with that summer team and we have that, we can, we can get that back to you. But yes, that's something that we need to learn more a little bit about. So.
That was the first one that we used from the University of Minnesota and it's been adapted over the years. Because as we've used Raider, it was originally called CCR years ago and was wisely rebranded as Raider Time. I think they've taken, my understanding is that that ramp up to readiness curriculum from the, was what was started. And then it has branched off over time, diverting based upon what the topic is. So I think we can certainly get a broader detail for the board, but I know it was originally rooted when we moved to the flex time in the University of Minnesota's ramp up to readiness curriculum.
Okay. And then along with that subject, is PSEO kind of reviewed within Raider Time? I mean, how many, how many times a year would you say that it's reviewed in?
In terms of what, have any option out there?
The options, just giving the students the information because so many of them, you know, some of them don't even know what PSEO is or what it stands for.
Parents do.
Yeah, that.
Well, parents do, but then we want to make sure that some parents that aren't interacting with, you know.
Yeah. So PSEO is an interesting statute because it's, we don't technically serve the kids that are in PSEO. It's served by the college. And so we're kind of restricted a little bit on how much we can talk about it. But we put all the options out there for students to dig into. PSEO is really designed for those students who are ready to take college level classes, which has some independent variables with it. So I know that during registration time, the options are put out there and it's kind of up to those students to dig in and see what they want to take. We can, although our concurrent enrollment, we can be advisors for them. We can push them forward there. PSEO is just a little bit different. It's available. Yep.
I'll just add one more. I, I think its goal last year with all four counselors were to get in front of their alphabet at least twice a year. And one at the beginning, one at the end and kind of pre and post and see, you know, goals have changed. But I know that that's part of their, their, the information that is given to them during these one-to-one meetings fall in, in spring as well.
Well, thank you so much for your report and just thank you for your dedication and your investment in our kids and especially for your leadership.
Next, we have the reimagine Northfield High School update and some renderings. Sal Bagley from World Architecture Architects and Engineers will provide that update on the reimagine high school project. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Also with me tonight is Josh Cooper from Knutson Construction. So I might call him up to answer any of your questions and talk about schedule and phasing in particular. So we are honored to be here to give you an update on the project. I will spend a little bit of time talking about process of what we've been up to. I will explain to you kind of what hasn't been done yet because we are in design through February of next year. And then the main part of our presentation tonight is to go through computer generated rendering. So what the project is proposed to look like. If you are here in the room, you can see that we have physical samples of all of the proposed materials on a, on table here. I will gesture to each of those as I explain them. There's a slide I'll, I'll do that on. Just because color rendering on anyone's individual monitor can vary quite significantly. Something might look brighter, darker, more saturated, things like that. And these will be made available to the school district. So the high school will have a copy at the high school. We are planning to be at conferences this week on Wednesday and have a table and kind of open house style. And those materials will be available along with the renderings for families. So going back to right after the passage of the referendum, we worked with the administration to put together a core planning group. I spent quite a bit of time on my, in my schematic design update on who participated in that. Which is a brief reminder, we did have eight initial meetings with them, December through April of this year. They did also have the opportunity to go on building tours in the third week of January. And then we just got them back together recently. So they were just back together on September 9th, kind of seeing a preview of what you all are seeing tonight. We did have an activities and athletic subcommittee that focused quite a bit on, I would say, the expanded gym portions of the project, as well as some of the other ancillary spaces. And then, like I said, we did do that May 12th update to the board. And here we are tonight, September 22nd for our design development update. I would imagine that we will do at least one more update before we go out to bid, probably towards the end of construction documents. A huge part about what our team has been up to, and I'll echo what Chris Dibble said in his presentation about how dedicated your teachers are in time. There's been no insignificant contribution of time to this project from your staff. And the user group meetings that are on the bottom right-hand side of this, it looks like a small little note, couple of bullet points. What that really looked like was teachers from all of these, teachers and staff from all of these different input groups getting together for hours at a time, weeks apart, talking about important, but sometimes minute details. So these are all the groups that we've had user group meetings with over the past few months. And I would say that there's not a group that we got done in one meeting, right? It's very rare. We show up, the drawing's perfect and we decide to hang out the rest of the meeting, right? So it's often that there's feedback. We talk about rotating the room. We talk about changing cabinetry arrangements. We talk about adding or deleting marker or tack boards. We might have some follow-up topics or research to do for them. And so every single one of these groups has had at least two meetings. And then there's some spaces we've had to have more than two meetings to get the details right. Things like a main office administration suite is complex with lots of users, lots of security topics to think through. We actually have a series of follow-up user group meetings this Wednesday, actually with a few groups that we still have some details to work out. So we'll be meeting with the athletic director office and the media AV. We'll be meeting with the business department and a couple of other groups on Wednesday yet. So we're not totally done with user groups, but we've gotten pretty far. And on the next couple of slides, I have just some examples of what the work product of those user group meetings is. So what we do, I will show you all an overall floor plan and a few slides here. But what we do is we zoom in on a part of the building and we start talking about flow and function, all the way to what directions do doors swings, you know, outlet locations, light switch locations, how should lights be switched, things of that nature. So just a couple of examples here. This is an example, user group drawing, at least as of our most recent iteration of the main office or administration suite. So just to walk you through in case you're not as much of a floor plan reader, on the left-hand side there. Gesture ghosted in suggested furniture arrangements, but there will be an input process for that. You can see here, we've got offices along the north for principal and assistant principal, as well as a flexible office for people who are there part of the time or maybe as another conferencing space, a couple of conference rooms on the right-hand side, both a medium and a large group. And then on the southern side, you can see we've got our nurses or health office with bathrooming and then the workroom for staff. So this is an example of the type of space we've had to have multiple meetings to get the arrangements and details right for. Another important one, a building block of the high school is what does a classroom look like? So you have some environments that are specialized, right? Some of your science environments or tech ed or art or things of that nature that are, are different than your typical classroom. But we have had multiple user group meetings with your, kind of your core teaching staff. And they really landed on creating this Swiss army knife of a classroom that is flexible. So that if you rearrange or have more of one in the, in the future or less of one in the future, that it's not too rigid. And so this general classroom was in, had input from all of those core departments. So you can see on the right-hand side, some notes all the way down to, like I said, power and data locations. Here's an example, user group drawing from some of the science classrooms. We did spend a lot of time talking about specialization with this group. In particular, this shows two of the labs. One of them is focused around the teaching and learning of chemistry and the other one around earth and space with a shared prep room. And we usually also bring in addition to the 2D floor plan drawings I just showed you for a user group drawing. We often do bring these, we call them exonometric drawings, kind of like the ceiling's peeled off and we're looking down into it. Just because not everybody is a floor plan reader or you can't really appreciate space until you see it in three dimensions. So this is an example of one of those showing the kind of weights and cardio space with the suggested equipment layout that we had gotten from those users. So that's really the phase we've been in, in addition to developing the design. So I will go through some overall information quickly. It's my understanding that you all were the recipients of a link to a video walkthrough for the project that I believe is also available on the district's website. We're not going to sit here and watch it tonight. But so all of what I'm going to go through is two-dimensional imagery, but there is three-dimensional imagery available for those who are interested. So here we are looking at the site. I will say that we have not yet submitted to the city of Northfield. We are intending to do that relatively soon here. We have another meeting with them this Thursday to talk about the development of the project. Talking about implement, implementation of some of the city's ordinances. There's a couple of ordinances actually under review by the city right now that we're trying to figure out what might change actually by the time we formally submit. We know a lot more about grading and stormwater and utilities than we did the last time we met with them. And then last but not least, we have received the results of the traffic study that the district commissioned. And so those will be our main talking points with the city. So all of that's to say is that this is a draft at this time, right? We have not formally submitted to the city and we're in design until February. But I think the building blocks we can talk through. So you can see we've got, North is up in this drawing. And I'll explain briefly, the existing building portions that are remaining and being renovated are in the diagonal crosshatch. And so at the very northern part of that shape, actually if I gesture, do you see it? Yes. At the very northern part of that shape right here, for example, is the media center. This part of that shape is the existing main office and student services area. At the center here would be the kitchen, the cafeteria commons, the main entry would be right there. Off to the left-hand side here, to the west would be the existing auditorium in the lower commons. And then right here would be the, the gym. We've got the weight room, locker rooms on either side of it, music upstairs. So all of those are portions of the building that are staying, oh, and the, the current V wings, sorry, we shouldn't skip over that. So all those parts of the project are, are building are staying and being improved. And then you'll notice there's parts of the building that are proposed to be demolished, right? That's part of the project. So in large part, the H wing, the M wing, the D wing and the S wing are no longer shown on this drawing. For context, the H wing comes out to about right here on the site. It's very, very close to about how far the proposed addition will come out to. And then there's a small connection piece that we're keeping up here. But in large part, all of that will be turned over to replacement site amenities. So then the additions are, the proposed additions are shown in the white. So we've got our main entry and office and classroom addition that's proposed to go to the east of the building. We've got our music and activities addition that's proposed to go to the southwest part of the building. And then we have a bus entry and the fax kind of hands-on kitchen classroom are a small but important addition on the north side of the building. So I'll just walk you through the intended flow and function of the site and traffic with the caveat that we are still undergoing conversations. So the intent is to have family or parents pick up and drop off, as well as student traffic arriving to and from the site, come from division. So you can see we're showing connecting to division here with a drop-off loop going around this main parking lot. So that would be a two-way drop-off loop, kind of a mini version of like what you might see at the airport where there's a pull-off lane. Somebody gets out of the car and then you can go into the pass-through lane to get out of line. And all of that surrounds parking. So we have parking. And all of that surrounds parking. So we have parking here, as well as parking here. So the lion's share of the parking for the building will be in these two lots. For context, this lot right here on the eastern side is really, in large part, where you have a parking lot today. But we are reconstructing it, changing grades a little bit, and then we have to do some stormwater management. And then people will really come, leave the way they came. So we will have this cross road, as I like to call it, across the site that is incredibly important for emergency vehicle access and before and after school activities, things of that nature. But the traffic study really showed the importance of really using kind of your most improved and capable road division for that traffic to come and go through, as opposed to on Raider. So it is likely that that will have a gate during the pickup and drop-off times that is openable, for example, for an after-school event, right? For a show, for a game, for a practice. So it will be, access to Raider on the other side will be controlled. Staff and deliveries and buses, however, will be going on Raider up to the western and northern part of the site. So you can see right now, at the top of the site plan, you see it's labeled bus loop. So that kind of goofy shaped piece of pavement is specifically engineered to think about the turning movements of a bus. And so the idea is that a school bus could come up there. They park in an angular fashion where somebody could step off the, out of the door of the bus and they're right onto a sidewalk and walk into the school. And then the buses can pull away and leave without having to back up. So that is what a bus loop is, and that will be on, proposed to be on the northern part of the site. Separating forms of traffic is really a key tenet of site safety, and so that was a driver for the core planning group. The blue shape just to the north of that will be a surface stormwater management feature. Some people call them a pond, right? It's an infiltration basin. And then we will also have some changes and expansion to the parking near the activities entry. So on the southern side of the building, we will have an activities entry. It is essentially just to the west of the southern wall of the weight room. So if you're standing on site today, you can kind of imagine where that wall will be. And so we will be adding some parking in and around that area as well. Essentially a no net neutral, or kind of a net neutral parking situation in the end, trying not to lose stalls. But we do have to bring your parking lots up to current city ordinances, which does have some implication about stall count. Couple other features I'll point out on the site. We will have a small area right here for some vehicles that transport students receiving special education services to be able to pull off. They're often in, you know, smaller buses or vans or things of that nature and go inside the building. We've got a couple of key programs right inside this wing of the addition. And then I'll talk about tennis and geothermal as well. So the, there are five tennis courts that will be reconstructed in place. And by that, I mean, we will rebuild them, but they are not physically moving because that had stormwater management implications. And then we will have three tennis courts built directly to the, to the west of that. So right now you have two tennis courts. You can kind of see them because we're drawing on top of an aerial, just to the, you have two and then five. So you'll have, all of them will be in a row. We're working on that with the athletic department and some other users. So all will be new, but five of them are not moving. And then last but not least, geothermal. Obviously, the third question from the bond referendum, very exciting that that passed as well. So we are still dialing in the exact number of wells that you will need. We anticipate the test well report will be back, we're hoping, next week. They had some challenges encountering sand when they did the, the test well that they had to work through. But we're imagining that the wells will be on the southern side of that parking lot and to the east. They might even line one of the fields a little bit in the outfield. So stay tuned on the number of wells, but generally speaking, the recommendation is for them to be on the south side of the building. So that is the site. Maybe a couple of other things I'll say before I move on to the floor plan. We have been working with the city and our traffic study did have specific comments and recommendations about tying into surrounding path systems. And so they look small on the site plan this big when you show, anytime you show a 40-acre campus on one slide. But we had, do have path connections to existing path systems to the north, to the northwest, out onto division. And we have had to keep in very close touch with the city about potential improvements on division and how we might tie into those, right? Some of those we actually, they don't have designs for yet. So some of it, we have to just talk about possibilities or connecting, but. Okay, so now I will go through the floor plan. It is, in large part, very similar to what you saw in the schematic design update, but we obviously have a lot more detail today. So in an effort to get to the renderings a little bit more quickly, I will talk about the key highlights and changes. And then I can take any questions if people have them. So on this side, we are showing all three levels of the building. You will have a partially three-story building, a mostly two-story building. On this left-hand side of the slide will be the main level floor plan. The driving and organizing element that the core planning group really wanted to have was this unifying commons as they went on tours of other buildings, that that was really important, as opposed to a hallway-based building. And so you'll see that that kind of cerulean blue color really connects all of the wings of the building. That is partially addition and partially renovation. So again, the existing building ends about right here, just south of the volume that says Torch. So we've got some in the new addition with a main entry and then lots of it actually happening in the existing building, including connecting back to the activities entry. If you were to walk inside the main entry, immediately to your left would be the main office for secure, and have a secure vestibule. And the administration in large part is located there, as well as the health office. Right above them, if I go to the second floor, would be student services. So things like counselors and all of that would actually be with a connecting stair right above the college and career center. So they really wanted to have some distinction in the services that those two groups do, while still being close to each other, because there is interconnectivity, as you just heard in the last presentation. Then as we look at the rest of the classroom and office addition, I'll just explain what the colors mean. So the core planning group felt very strongly about having integrated or dispersed spaces for students with special needs. And so you'll see a variety of those purple classrooms labeled throughout each level and each wing. So some of them are a little more specialized and others are more, a little more generalized. But you won't see, for example, a wing that's all purple, where all of those things would be in one area from the stigma side of it. Then we have collections of those general classrooms I talked about. In this diagram, they say WL for world language, or SS for social studies, or LA for language arts. But like I said, they really chose to design kind of a common classroom that would be functional for anyone. So there's not a lot of differences when it comes to those light green colors. And then surrounding or in the center of all of those is a flexible learning area. So we've been calling them pods or wings with the core group and staff. So there's really two wings per floor. The first floor is a little bit different because it does have dedicated science labs. Then if I step into the existing building, uses in the existing main office will be for torch, mental health, and the tech department. We have the media center in large part where it is today with improvements, just moving a couple of things out of the way so that the commons can directly connect to the, to the V wing. We do have a move of the culinary department up to the viewing. I mentioned there's a small addition there so that they can be kind of down by the, some of that other hands-on activities. And then improvements throughout the shops and through the art area. So this diagram doesn't show those quite as much, but lots changing. In the center part of the building, we will be doing a lot of work to expand the kitchen and serving area to serve the right number of students. So the wall of the servery will move south a little bit to accommodate that. In large part, students will enter on the east side, flow through the one of five serving lines and exit kind of in the southwest corner here with two main entrances and exits. If we move into the activities portion of the building, you can see here, we've got our expanded gym volume in this orange color. So right now, the design shows three of those courts being in one volume and the fourth court. Many people have been calling it the community court. Our drawings show it as community court is also called Court One, just because it'd be the first one you would encounter when you walk in. And then there's a walking track loop, if I go to the second level, around the three courts, as well as around the fourth court. So you would really have kind of a three-court loop and a four-court loop. We have our music addition on that level as well. So there's three large rehearsal spaces for band, orchestra, and choir, along with offices and instrument storage, practice rooms, ensemble rooms. That will be the storm shelter fortified portion of your building. And then last but not least, we have improvements happening in the game gym. I'll show you some views of the weight room. And then lots of rearrangement happening in the locker rooms, both to address Americans with Disabilities Act challenges, as well as just some programmatic needs. So that's the super high, oh, I should also say, in the area where music is today, we will have a community gathering classroom. The H is health, so we have two health classrooms. And then I will show you a view of, we're now calling it Raider Hall. I gotta get all my new names. We're learning about all of the new suggested names. But it's really a space that could be served as a black box theater, a lecture hall, guest speakers, nice gatherings of events, coaches getting together, so a flexible space. When we talked with the core planning group about what made Northfield a special place to live, work, and send your children to school, there were some common themes that came up that we wanted to make sure were included in the design. So at the top here, you see welcoming, gathering, and celebrating. There was a lot of discussion about the tight-knit, knit element of both the high school culture, as well as the community culture. And that really plays itself out in pride. There's a lot of pride in the community, a pride in celebrating history, a lot of dedication of allocation of space to that. And then we wanted to make sure to capture kind of the, the yin and the yang of Northfield of that there is an energetic downtown, right? There's a lot to do, always activities happening, celebrations, getting together. But that a lot of people mentioned what made them proud or happy to live here or work here was actually a lot of the access to tranquil spaces, too. And we thought that that translated really well to a high school, right? There's times of energy, and then there's times that we have to really sit and focus and have some time with our thoughts and our work. And so we wanted to make sure that the design incorporated all of that. I'm going to get into exterior design and then interior design. I think this might be a good time for me to talk a little bit about materials. So we are doing quite a bit of work on the exterior of the building, obviously the new additions, but even in the existing building envelope. As you discussed during the setting of the referendum question, there's large parts of the building that do not have any insulation in them. And so we will be insulating those walls. And that provides the opportunity to do some changing of what the existing building looks like on the outside with different materials. But there are parts of the building that will stay, right? There's parts of the building that did have insulation in them. And so we do have some existing bricks that we know we need to work with and honor and be holistic with. So those are shown, some pictures of those are shown in the bottom right-hand corner. And then we do have, in, you know, the design really is seeking to respect the existing building and some of its very strong mid-century language around kind of window repetitiveness and kind of some verticality. So not matching it, but wanting to honor it and blend into it, right? We don't want to look like a building that wasn't meant to be with it. So when it comes to materials, I do encourage people to spend some time with the physical samples because even on this monitor, like the, I'll call it the orange brick looks really red, right? And that's just color tuning of monitors. But I will, I'll talk to the side and then I'll come over here and gesture. So we have the existing brick to remain, as well as a new brick. So on the left-hand side, you see the existing brick to remain. In large part, that is on the auditorium. Volume is a newer addition that actually had insulation. And then we are proposing to a new brick, we call it the orange brick or the light brick, to grab some tones from that, but modernize it by having less variety in it, less flash, as well as a proposed dark brick. So large parts of the proposed additions would have those materials. The main, the main other material from an exterior perspective would be the precast. So the expanded gym and music additions are proposed to be of precast concrete tilt-up panels. So those are those eight-foot-wide panels that show up on a huge truck and get erected and the building just pops out of the ground. So they are a great option for large volume spaces, both from an efficiency perspective of construction, as well as durability. And so we are proposing that in a color that's quite similar to our darker brick in a variety of washes. So we'll have some combination of acid etch, water wash, water wash, and sandblast precast. You'll see the patterns on the renderings. Some other materials that maybe aren't as prominent, but will, you will see in the renderings and of course, once it's built. We will have a little bit of metal panel at our entrance canopies, so you'll see some of that. You have what's called coping at the top of your walls that's in a bronze color. So we will be in places replacing it, but also matching it on new. And then, of course, glass. I didn't bring a glass sample tonight, but there is a strong motivator in the project to increase access to natural daylight. And so there will be a prominent amount of glass and its framing is proposed to be black. And then last but not least, a special element for your project is the stone. So we heard a lot about wanting the building to feel unique, have a kind of a landmark or a special element. I think we talked about that at our last meeting. But also wanted to make entrances obvious, like we have an actual functional problem at the high school of people not necessarily knowing if they've come to the main entrance. And so when we're all said and done, wanted that to not be the case. So the left-hand, or my left, your right-hand side of the table has most of the exterior materials. Now I will go through the renderings. I will go through them quickly just so we have more time for questions. This is a drone shot, so to speak, looking at the existing building, as well as the proposed addition. Just for a little bit of context, this is the existing main office volume, so the existing main entrance would be about right here. In that location, we are proposing covered bike parking. So there's some there, as well as at the activity entrance. And here is that main entry. We'll zoom in a little bit more in, I think it's about five slides, with that stone fin wall, really trying to call a lot of attention to that. We have our, in large part, two-story office and classroom wing here with both of our brick varieties used on it. Every classroom or office having multiple windows into that. And then the, in the background, or kind of the mid-ground of this image, you can see the three-story component of the classroom and office addition. The commons expansion is right here with a significant amount of daylight coming in on really all sides. And then in the background of this, you can just start to see the expanded gym. So now we'll just kind of go around the building, heading to the west. Now we've come directly east of the classroom and office addition, looking at it. There's a green space between the two wings. The addition peels apart from itself to allow maximum amount of daylight into classrooms. And then if we keep going in that direction, kind of stepping around, you can see part of the building is one-story for our science rooms. Those are larger. And we are limited by total amount of square footage in the project, one of our budget drivers we work on with Knutson. But in this view, you can see the outdoor eating area that's just south of the indoor part of the cafeteria. So there'd be doors right here. Now we've come around to the southern side of the building and we are looking north. So here is the, for some context, this is the existing weights area and the game gym would be beyond. So this is where the activities entry will be. And as I mentioned, the expanded gym is proposed to be made of precast concrete tilt-up panels, windows into that space, as well as some patterning in the reveals and the way that they cast those. And then I'll keep coming around. Now we are on the west side of the building, looking east. You're seeing the classroom and office addition in the background. This right here, for context, is the existing auditorium. And then this right here would be that music addition, so our three main rehearsal spaces that also serves as our storm shelter. Now we're going to be more on the ground, as opposed to those aerial or drone, drone views. So this is as if we've just come off division and we're about to make our way into the drop-off loop. You can see on the left-hand side of this image, that small pull-off area for our special education transport vehicles where they could go into a door. So even our, a door like that is demarcated with that stone fin wall to give it prominence. And then as we come around, let's say we're getting dropped off. Mom and dad just dropped us off. This is what we'd see when we step off the curb. An entrance plaza here, proposed plantings still being discussed. Here's that covered bike parking I mentioned. So we will have a significant amount here, as well as at the activity entrance. And then here is that entrance into the building with the commons. You can see beyond. A view indoors will show it while is, in addition, but you can see some of the high, clear story windows coming into the space, both at that third level, as well as up here at kind of like a story and a half level. And then right here would be main office administration on first floor and student services above. This is a view of what that would look like at night. Thought that that showed off the covered bike parking a little bit better, as well as how some of the interior treatments will actually be very prominently featured for evening events, which we all know is a big part of high school. Another view of those classroom wings. So we have, there's really two treatments for the classroom wings, but the change, or there's no change to the indoor user. So every classroom right now is shown to have two six-foot-wide windows. So for context, that would be three ceiling tiles wide is six feet. So they'd have 12 feet total width of window into their classroom. So when you're looking at this image right here, that's one classroom and right next to it is another. So there's two right there and then two below it. And then there's different treatment between them. In some cases, it might be metal panel. In some cases, it might be what we call spandrel glass. But all of that is really to give kind of the illusion of these tall windows, right? To hearken back to that original design of the building. But just to be clear, kind of where it seems more transparent is actually the window itself. So every classroom is proposed to have one of those. And that's true even when we have our lighter or our orange brick. Actually, this and this would be the windows into that classroom, and we have some spandrel or metal panel just above it. So now we've come again around to the southern side, looking north. Here you can see the three-story classroom wing where the science addition sticks out a little bit bigger. Those are larger spaces. And now we've come into that outdoor eating area just south of the commons expansion. This is probably a good slide to mention before we go inside that furniture has not been selected yet. We'll go through a whole input process for that. But it's always a little disappointing when we show up and show empty spaces, right? So we're showing placeholder, you know, furniture even for the outdoor plaza, but we will have to make a lot of selections yet. Now we've come along all the way Now we've come along all the way to the northern side of the building. So little context for those who know the existing building. We're kind of, I think we would be in the S wing actually, but um, so this right here is the media center. And then right to the right of that would be our proposed new bus entry with again, another stone fin wall and then our small addition for that culinary lab. I should have also mentioned as we went through these, we've been talking with the core planning group and in particular, the art department about ways to accommodate treatments for sculptures throughout. You've seen a couple of art sculptures in the renderings. We don't know exactly where they'll be, but there's a lot of interest in maintaining that culture. And speaking of art, here is the, just to the right of that bus entry, kind of if you turned and 30 degrees and looked, there is a small entry exit into the wing where art is as well. Now we'll come around to the activity entry. So now we're on the south, looking north again. Here you can see into that activities lobby, the, the doors would be right here. Another one of those stone demarcators that you've arrived at a main entrance, high natural daylight coming in above the entrance canopy as well. And then here is the other half of our covered bike parking. This is one of our stairs that comes off of the walking track as an exit. Opportunity for some branding, which all of those things are kind of still ongoing of what, what exactly we might do where for logos and things, but we want to make sure that that pride is incorporated. Here's a view of that in the evening. Now coming around, this is the southern side of the music addition. So this will also be made of those precast architectural concrete panels with windows into the rehearsal spaces as well as the common gathering space. And then we will step inside. So there's a large slide here of materials. And again, I would encourage you to come check out the physical samples. But there's a whole variety of materials that we need to think about, everything from paint to tile to multiple kinds of flooring, to cabinetry, to what existing materials are going to be there. So I'll probably start in the bottom right-hand corner. So there are some existing wall types that will still be there in the building. There's some painted concrete block. There's some former exposed brick that's been painted white. There is still some exposed brick and there is some, quite a bit of existing terrazzo flooring throughout the circulation and many of those materials will stay. We have to do some patching and sometimes we're applying a new finish on top of them. But we know, we knew we wanted to be able to work with those. Then I'll go to the north. We will have cabinetry materials. So P-LAM is plastic laminate, so a wood look for cabinetry and a solid surface, kind of like a faux quartz for the countertop material. We will have wood accents and a couple of different materials. So we have a wood accent product that will be on the walls that'll show you in a couple key areas as well as a ceiling treatment. Acoustics and function are always big topics when we design a school. So we have these products right here, these tackable surfaces that bring color in. You can hang things on them like, just like they sound like you would a corkboard, but they also have an acoustic value to them too. So those are used strategically throughout the project. We have a variety of tiles that you'll see in the renderings. We've got kind of some field tiles or more neutral tiles that will be used in large areas as well as some special accent tiles to bring in your particular district's colors. And then paint, right? We have a lot of paint of walls and other surfaces to do. So we will have a field white color or main, main white color as well as a, some accents that are neutral colors. We've got some accents that are your branding colors. And then we're also rounding them out with a couple of colors that are a little bit calmer to create that tranquil feeling. So you're seeing a couple of tones of blue. I do have physical samples of the carpet up here. We will have a few different kinds. They will all be tiles, right? Like so that they're swap outable in case you have a spill or something. But so there will be a main field carpet tile that's a series of gray tones as well as some accents. So there's a one that has an accent of the gold as well as an accent of the maroon. So you'll see those if you come up here. The maroon is kind of what's hanging off the front of the table. In addition to what's called walk-off carpet, that's just like really absorptive, kind of scrubby carpet that's intended to get salt and sand off of shoes when you walk in and out of buildings. There's a couple of places we'll have a rubber floor. Nurse's office is a good one to think about, right? Need a durable floor there. And then there's still a lot of discussion ongoing about what the main new commons floor should be. Terrazzo is an option, polished concrete is an option, but we do know we're going to have to patch the existing terrazzo in some places. Quickly I'll go through, we do have some more impactful branding that's proposed to happen in some of the athletic areas. And so you can see kind of the peeling away of some of those other colors to really focus on your branding colors when it comes to paint. We will have acoustic fabric wall panels to help control sound both in the lobby as well as inside activity spaces. And then we'll have a variety of floors in the flooring types in the weight room and on the walking track. And there are physical samples of all of those. So now I'm going to walk you through the building in 2D if you haven't had a chance to do the 3D. And then if you're ever confused about where you are, there is an image in the upper right-hand corner of every slide and the little dot is the person and the triangle is their cone of vision. So this is as if we've just walked through the main entrance and kind of stepped back to, to survey what we can see. The doors on the right-hand side are kind of in the background would be out to that outdoor eating area. The main entrance, like I said, would be behind us. And then in this, you're seeing the expansion of the commons and cafeteria. You are looking toward the classroom and office addition. So we've got two staircases that you can see in that view, one right here, one going up a stone column right here, kind of a main central feature staircase. You're also able to see in this bathrooms on every level for the, for the classroom users. The main office would be this door that you're seeing right here is kind of around the corner from that stone fin wall. And again, furniture has not been selected. Now we have come into this space and we're looking back towards the main entrance. So we were kind of standing right next to the stone fin wall in the last view. These would be all the doors to the exterior. And then this is that large curtain wall that we saw from the outside as well as some of those high cleristory windows. I was talking with somebody right before the meeting started about acoustics in this space. And so there's a few different things that we're doing. We've got acoustic panels proposed to be on the walls with kind of a subtle N in them. And then we will also have acoustic, kind of high acoustic value ceiling tiles to help control sound in this space as well. Now we've come to the third level, looking down over that space, just to help people appreciate the daylight that would come in that, as well as the proposal that we would have kind of a feature light, light fixture that you would see both indoors and outdoors, especially in the evening. We will do improvements in the existing cafeteria as well. So now we've stepped into the existing building, kind of right where the doors would be today. One of the main changes that you'll notice is that right now there's some glass walls that divide the cafeteria from the hallway today. So those are proposed to go away. And then like I mentioned, the kitchen needs to get larger. So the wall of the kitchen has moved kind of closer to the gym in this view. And this is that door I mentioned that Soonz would go in to get food and then they would exit out here. So this is your existing flooring proposed to remain in place. Lots of improvement happening around branding opportunities as well as improvements in the ceilings as we are doing quite a bit of work in the mechanical electrical systems. Now we're just come to the other end of what you know is kind of the upper, upper commons or upper cafeteria area today. This large wall is the wall that gets into the gymnasium, proposed to have the ability to have some, again, key district branding along that. And now we've, we're looking at the exit of that dining server area. Now we're going to go to the north. So right, what you're seeing in the left-hand side of this image is the raider closet. So that was wanting to be prominently featured off the commons based on the core planning group and to de-stigmatize it. And so we're really featuring it. And then there's kind of a wave finding moment here to try to help you make sure that you're still going where you intended to go. So in this northern part of the building, we've got the media center. We have the culinary part of the fax department, the tech ed and art. And so that would help you know that, oh yep, I'm, I'm going in the right direction. I'm hanging a left. And you can see the main or the media center in the background here. Now we've come just to the south side of the media center. For those of you who've spent time in the high school media center, you can actually see this brick wall as you sit in the main presentation area, right? So right now there's just infills between the brick and the proposal is to take those out and open it up at least visually. So there will still be acoustic control there because there will be glass, but to allow some of that natural daylight that the media center is known for, driving deeper into the space. We're also proposing to have some lockers in this area as it's right by the bus entry. So that seemed like a nice convenient area, be able to stop at your locker before, you know, at the beginning and end of the school day. Coming inside the media center, now we're really standing kind of like where that presentation wall is in the media center today, looking out at the rest of it. One of the main things that was important during the design was that this is a multi-use space and sometimes there's meetings that need to happen or testing or an event that makes accessing the materials challenging because it's all one big room. And so they wanted the ability to have some acoustic control or programmatic control between those spaces, but they could still open and operate at times that you want to. So that's what you're seeing there along with a relocated presentation wall. Now we're kind of just taking another angle. We're looking back through the spaces that we're opening up between those brick columns out toward that wall that had the lockers. And then this is right inside the bus loop. So the media center would be kind of right behind us into our right. These would be the doors that go out to that bus loop area for students. The lockers would be right behind us to our left. Small gathering space here, flexible learning area before we head into the V wing where the culinary part of the fax department and art and tech ed are. This is the, kind of the very beginning of that hallway. So the, this little alcove would be the entrance into the culinary department. So we've got our teaching kitchen. It's kind of this volume you're seeing in the very right-hand corner. They've got kind of a classroom or a learning environment that we talked about using as like a mock restaurant through this door. And then there's things like the pantry and laundry and an office. At the very end of the art department, the, there's an existing classroom that's proposed to be converted into an art gallery and kind of a flexible space for that department. And so that's what you're seeing here. There's some built-in display cases. There's some pinup walls. They could leave the classroom, you know, come out and critique somebody's work, have a focus unit out here. So proposing to open up the ceiling here and paint the structure, but then mostly leave it kind of a blank, blank canvas really for the art to be on display. Now I will come into the main office or the main classroom wing. So all of the classroom wings have a lot of similarities, so we won't go through each one individually. We are standing in the center of a flexible learning area here with classrooms on either side of us. You can see, you've probably seen another rendering so far, but I'll point it out here. We've got tile proposed to be on the wall up to a certain height for durability. We have our doors into classrooms with transoms and side lights next to them. And then there are some view windows from classrooms out to this flexible learning area that the core planning group spent a lot of time talking about. Now we've kind of come further into the space and we're looking back where we just were. There's a gathering space at the center here with a presentation wall. These blue shapes are some acoustic and tack treatments as I mentioned. And then you're seeing a conference room and into a classroom here. Now if we come into a classroom, we are standing kind of with the flexible learning area behind us, looking outside. So here's those two six-foot wide windows that we were talking about. This one just happens to be looking across the courtyard toward the other classroom wing. And then this is if we were standing at those windows, looking back at the flexible learning area. Every general classroom will have some storage, both tall storage, upper cabinets, lower cabinets and countertop. This would be the door where you access the space and then some glazing next to that door and in the corner for supervision. This would be the hallway to the music edition. So for context, the right-hand side wall is the existing southern wall of the auditorium. So like that's outside right now, right? So we will have a hallway there. Opportunity to have some branding up and down this hallway. And then we step into the music department. Right when you walk in, we will have a set of bathrooms. So there's some restrooms right here, drinking fountain in this open flex space. There is accommodations for instrument storage and a wood feature wall. And then you're seeing a little bit more instrument storage in the background. We've got some color blocking to highlight the entrances to our main rehearsal spaces here. And then this is a view that just lets you see down, down the hallway a little bit and a little bit better into the bathroom. This is a view inside that raider hall space that's in one of the current music rehearsal spaces. So there will be a large projection screen and audio system. We will have acoustic panels and some theatrical lighting and curtains. And then the seating that you're seeing in that view is actually retractable. So it could go up against the wall and have kind of a large, flat floored space or you could have it pulled out like this for a performance or a lecture. Now we are in the, kind of just stepped inside the athletic entrance and we are looking to the west, so looking towards the expanded gym. We have on both sides of this lobby, I'll show you another view, a large wood slat wall with a announcements and display monitor, especially if you had activities, you could tell, say, oh, that tournament's on these three courts, what have you, some branding opportunities. And then this right here, actually I'll go forward when I'll come back. You can, right when you come in, you can go upstairs to the walking track level or you can go right upstairs and head to the right up that stairs. And you would be on the, kind of the balcony level of the game gym, right? So right when you come in that activities entry, you can kind of make that choice of where's, where am I attending an event today? How do I get there? The elevator up to that level is this maroon volume. So very easy access for, for visitors, for the community, right? Tons of people are anticipated to come here. And then that actually serves as kind of a bridge or a link between the game gym balcony level and the walking track. So you'll have connectivity there instead of having to go up and down. This view you can see a little bit in down the hallway. So there's windows being cut into those health classrooms. We've got opportunity for display cases and again, more branding up and down that hallway. Looking down that hallway here is the entrance into the expanded gym on the left-hand side. We will go in that space next, just a little bit further down the hallway would be the main set of bathrooms. Now we have stepped inside the expanded gym. We happen to be between courts three and four right now. So kind of between the northern two most courts. This view shows you how we have the six basketball hoops per court. We've discussed where we want to have divider curtains and maybe some other features that are stored in the ceiling. And then you can also see the walking track at this level. So that's the walking track above, some of that natural daylight coming in. Tucked underneath the walking track are in, in large part, storage as well as a couple places where we have bleachers. So kind of right in the foreground on the left, you're seeing some bleachers. You're seeing some on the north wall here. Now we've kind of come into the space with the community court at our back, looking to the north, obviously seeing a lot of pride in this space with all of the color application and treatment. Now we are up on the walking track level. We happen to be on the south side of the walking track, kind of heading, heading north to go up the west side. So here you're kind of seeing the music addition out of these windows. We will have acoustic treatments between those windows. There'll also be an acoustic deck in this space to try to help control sound. And then just a head-on view. Now we've come into that court one or the community gym. Been referred to a lot of names. I heard a couple of other names last week as we work on what to call these spaces, right? To, for scheduling and things. So a loop above here and then a significant amount of natural daylight facing to the south here. So this gym will have a lot of that. And I think I look back in the next one. Yeah. So now we're looking back and through these windows, you can see onto the walking track of the three courts. And there is connectivity on both the walking track level and the game court level. This is a view just to help explain a little bit the geometry. So this is one of those axon views of the whole space. So again, you see the three courts and one volume with a three-court walking track and then the fourth court completes that four-court walking track. Now we are in the weight room. So a lot of the improvements in this space are really finishes. It's painting and flooring and lighting, but it's going a long way. There is a dividing kind of half wall that's going to be taken down. And then there's currently an elevated area that used to be a viewing area back when it was a pool. So that'll be flattened just so it's more flexible. Cardio activities are thought to go underneath there. We've got some sprinting activities and then really weights centered. So I just have a couple of different views of that. We've spent a ton of time in user groups talking about the layout and arrangement and function and striping. And this is a space that lots of details to talk about. Even down to like the detail at every weight rack. There is a small lobby outside of the wrestling room we talked about, people being able to change and not drag sand and dirt into the space. And then here we are in the existing game gym, bringing a lot of that same treatment of finishes into that space. So you're seeing onto the, kind of the upper calf area right there where it says we are in Northfield. All right. And I have the video linked in here, but it's my understanding everybody's had the opportunity. And even if you watch it really fast, it takes a while, but I hope everybody gets But I hope everybody gets the opportunity to do that. But I didn't mean to start it right now. So I'm going to click past. I think I've said these things throughout my presentation, but we are in the construction documents phase right now. So we will be in that phase through February of next year. So preparing to go out to bid, working closely with Knutson, with the district's facilities department on exact products, doing a lot of detailed engineering review. And then we will get through, we will start city's middle process here. We're hoping to do that in mid October. Thinking we'll probably be back to you all in January. Don't have a date picked out yet. And then, like I said, issuing documents for bidding at the end of February. Imagining probably having a bid opening in April. So it's a it's a large project. We want to give contractors plenty of time to study the documents, ask questions, and anticipating mobilization onsite in early June. I didn't put a detailed phasing plan in the presentation, but what I what I can say is that it's complicated. And we have to build new space before we can afford to tear down existing space. And so Knutson's been working very hard on site logistics and what I I think we have seven phases right now, something like that. So seven phases and what parking's available, what time and where are people coming from? And how are we keeping people safe and still being a school? So lots of details to work out there. I think with that, that's plenty of talking for me. I'm sorry. I tried to go as fast as I could, but I would love to take comments, questions, go back to anything.
Thank you, Sal.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
For members, do you have any questions for Sal?
Well, welcome, Sal, and welcome, Josh.
Thank you.
This is so exciting to see the plans that you put together. And I was lucky enough to be on the core planning team. So I've had a lot of my questions answered through that process.
Sure.
But just seeing the level of detail and the thoroughness in just these few documents. And I know at one point you said there's like over, when you're done, there'll be over 2,000 documents.
Easily.
Is very, very impressive. So I wanted to thank you for that and all your good work to get everyone together. And, you know, I was part of the core planning team and got to see how that process worked where we had, what was it, 40 people or so? And you managed to condense everything we were saying and and make it into an actual design. So amazing. My questions tonight are about sort of the materials that you're using. I'm wondering about the interior hallways, or we're not calling them halls, but the interior areas.
The flexible learning areas.
I think on five forty six, I think it was.
Forty six.
My question is this.
Must not be.
You know, I'm I'm a big proponent of national natural lighting. And I'm delighted to see the lighting that you have, but I'm wondering if there'll be enough lighting in that area between the classrooms.
Sure.
So if you could talk about that, especially in our dark gloomy winter mornings and things like that, how much natural lighting is coming in?
Sure.
If you'd also talk about, since we're talking about glass, what new materials you have available and their sort of energy efficiency ratings and not that level of details, but
Sure.
Do we have, how energy efficient will this building be? Or do we have access to energy efficient materials? And then, since we're still talking about glass, could you also talk about the safety of the glass?
Sure. Okay. Sure. I actually think all of those topics, even though you think of them as separate, they all blend really well together because we're talking about a series of choices that are trying to accomplish different goals and hoping to land in a place that accomplishes all of them to the best of our ability, right? Because swinging completely to one end of a spectrum to make to achieve one choice around daylight would have a negative consequence effect on energy efficiency, right? And swinging all the way on one end of the spectrum to having as much transparency as possible started to affect how how well a classroom can perform, right? So as we have conversations around appropriate use of glazing into this space, you know, those were all the drivers, right? Thinking about safety, thinking about supervision, thinking about daylight penetrating into the space. These happen to be interior windows. So we don't have to think about energy efficiency for these ones in particular. But what I would say is that, you know, the first couple of times that we showed some of these renderings, the feedback was bump it up. Add a little bit more glazing, right? That we had aired too much on the side of maybe some more solid walls, both for the function of this space of like having pinup space and places to hang marker boards or monitors. So some of the initial reactions was actually to increase. So it actually has increased in the last, I don't know, six weeks or so. But it was really important that the classrooms be functional while still allowing for lots of passive supervision. We actually had a group that went to a couple of schools on a special second tour visit. That was in June, I think, to a couple of other schools with that being the number one goal of, you know, how much glazing between the classrooms and this flexible learning area to achieve all of those goals. And so they really, the group that went with us and then I think they took, actually, I know they took videos for their colleagues and kind of narrated them. It was really important to them that we maximize verticality. So going from the ground to the ceiling, as opposed to we went to a school that had a lot of like from waist height maybe to door height. And it was not nearly as impactful to the feeling of connectivity as well as daylight penetration, right? So what I'll say about daylight penetration is the classrooms in large part should allow daylight to get into the center space, but it's all about time of day, right? As the sun moves around us, right, certain classrooms and certain pods will get more daylight. You know, at the very beginning of the day, when we've got those low morning sun angles, whereas some will get really nice high noon sun angles. So I imagine that that won't be a challenge, as well as the LED lighting that'll be in the space, I think will feel quite a bit different. I know it's not your question. That'll feel a lot different than the hallways you have today. So. And then safety is a big discussion topic, obviously has been a huge discussion topic in the past month or so. And so there's a couple of different things that we've been discussing of where we want to have. There's safety glazing as well as security glazing. And then there's also ballistic glazing, right? So if you think about tiers of glazing and they come in that price order, right? There's kind of typical laminated or tempered glass, then safety, then security, then ballistic. And so we did seek some input from, and you jump at any time, I should have said that. We did seek input from a group of first responders approximately three weeks ago to get some other take on priorities. And then actually, when we sent a recent set of documents to Knutson for estimating, we actually had them priced out a couple of different kinds of glazing. So I feel pretty confident saying right now that actually we haven't selected some, we haven't made some of those choices quite yet. I don't know if you have anything you'd add.
Yeah, I think, I mean, everybody knows what we're talking about. And we're looking at how do we continue that really delicate balance of having a school building that all feel welcome? Right? That is a learning environment with the reality that we face, right, of needing to protect our students and our staff. And so we're looking at a variety of different pieces. The the glazing is one important component of it, but it's one component. And I think what you're going to see as you think about this design from a security perspective, security is a system, right? And there's a number of different pieces to that system. Glazing is a really important one. And we are looking not only at upgrading some of the areas that typically six months ago would have been the regular, the regular glazing, if you will, the safety glazing, I think is the term. What would the increased cost be to make some of those areas that we had planned safety glazing turn into security glazing? There's also quite a bit of, there was already quite a bit of security glazing in the plan, especially at those high traffic entrances. But thinking about how do we expand that beyond just those initial components? I think the other part is that this building's technology for safety and security is going to be much more sophisticated than I think nearly anything we currently have on campus, even more so than our most recent projects at Greenbelt Park. So we are looking at safety and security as that system and the glazing being one of those. But we are looking at what would it cost increase more glazing to be security? And what is the trade off in that cost? And so that's just one component. We're talking about a number of other emerging safety and security systems, I would say, to be able to try to address those.
And I didn't answer your question when it comes to energy efficiency. And I actually think the, you know, the analogy that security is a system is a good one when we talk about about energy efficiency too, right? So the whole building and its systems work in concert to achieve an energy efficiency goal. And obviously that was a priority of the referendum, right? You know, inclusion of geothermal. We are insulating uninsulated walls. You will have highly modernized systems, LED lighting with much less power draw. You will have, I would say, energy efficient windows, but we are not currently pondering triple pane glazed windows. So that is something the district could choose to entertain. But every one of those choices, we have to think about first costs versus long term costs. And actually, one of the great parts about, I would say where we all do work is that there's a lot of technology and incentives for energy efficiency. So we're currently working with some energy modelers who create what are called bundles. So it's kind of like a what if you did this, what if you did that, what if you did this, and some combination of those? What would the change to the first cost of the project be versus the long term operating costs? And the district will be able to make some choices, right? And in the end, we all have one pot of money. We don't have like an energy efficiency pot of money and a safety pot of money and a branding pot of money, right? So we have to balance energy efficiency with daylight, with programmatic function, with pride, with funk, right? So I would say some of those choices actually are yet to be yet to be determined as well. Code's kind of the floor, right? We know we have to meet code, but it's like, how far do we want to exceed that to really uphold those referendum commitments? So.
Is there a chance that the secure glazing is has a better energy efficiency raising rating than?
It doesn't really.
Let's hope in for something.
They focused all their tech on impact resistance. I should say, it's still insulated. It's still an insulated glazing unit. So it wouldn't perform any worse, but that's not its selling feature.
Okay. And I have a really quick second question for you. Thank you for trying to sort out that big question. But my second question is on your classroom picture. You had like zone A and zone B in the classrooms.
Oh, yes.
Could you explain that?
Oh, sure. We talked about lighting. So all of the lighting in the project will be LED, which inherently really makes it dimmable. So that's a huge. You know, a lot of times in a classroom, people are very used to saying, I want my lights switched in four, every row switched separately. And the reason they say that is because that's their only way to dim today, right? Oh, turn off the front band or turn off two of them. So it's half power, right? So that will just be achieved automatically. We still wanted to know if they wanted to have the ability to turn off the lights in front of like the display in this particular image completely, just to make sure that for maximum legibility. You know, monitor and display has gone a long way in regards to that. Much better than projectors used to be. But there was still some desire to have a kind of a zone of lighting in front of the teaching wall versus the rest of the classroom in an approximately one third, two third fashion. So what that means when you walk into the classroom, there's going to be two light switches, one that kind of controls the row in front of the monitor and one that controls the rest. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Didn't know what the zones were for.
Yep, yep, just lighting zones.
Thanks.
Thank you for your report. One thing that I've always been a huge advocate of and always will be is is that this is a so sounds, you know, obviously like a wonderful building and we've always been good at reaching out to the public and making sure that, you know, this is a public building that it's available for rental and profit, nonprofit, private parties. And I'm sure that we've done a community ed for a long time that we can figure out what the spaces are and make sure that the the seniors and other community members just feel real comfortable. And I think maybe we could even work at kind of doing that over time that if we have some open houses, because it's very, you know, very new, very different, but we definitely want to be very affordable and open to, you know, the public because they pay for it. And I just want to make sure that we make that. Now, the question with that would be you know, with that, maybe that's more of a policy thing is just, it's just you have these new spaces to necessarily rent out and figure out what the fee would be. And I think typically it's always been if, you know, we have our academics and then if there's, you know, not academics going on, then we would, we would be able to rent that space out. So any, any thoughts on, and another great opportunity for tournaments, for all kinds of different things. So what has been your thought and experience working with districts and how they're maybe excited about getting these new spaces to work, to offer to the public and tournaments and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I have a couple of facility reflections and I'll let you talk to the policy side. So we did talk a lot about community use during design. You know, in even in the view I chose to put up right now, it's like, how do we make it easy to access, both in terms of like how obvious it is to get to the spaces and like travel distance, right? And how far do they have to park to get to that access, right? So all of that has been a kind of a leading criteria of the project, including making that community court or court one, kind of the first thing you could, you could get to just to prioritize it. There's been a lot of discussions about who can use or maybe gets first use of what space at what time of day. And I think all of that's probably still ongoing. I don't know that there's been a, you know, we haven't been making a ton of facilities changes for that. A lot of that comes to your point to scheduling. I don't know if there's anything you'd want to add to that.
Jeff, I think that policy nine oh two, you know, which is we discuss regularly. As we start to really see more of a final, we get closer to a final determination of what these spaces are going to look like. Community Ed's working really hard to look at this and say, you know, what are, what is the pricing structure, which will be similar to what we have now. We've got a rate for gyms, but we're just going to add gyms. So it's going to be a similar rate. But there's a number of great, I think the important piece about community ed, I don't think any of us quite understand yet the massive change this is going to be. It is a cascading impact. We are adding four full gymnasium courts and other amenities at the high school. What that means is it opens up all of the other buildings that typically were already used by high school athletics for community activities. So I, I, I think when we're focusing right now on the high school, that's understandable, right? We're focusing on this. But I'm telling you that the cascading impact of the availability for youth activities, for community ed enrichment activities from new parents all the way to seniors. I don't think we have any idea yet how significant of an impact this is going to be. And with all new spaces, there does have to be that policy consideration. And we're quite a distance from when these spaces would be open. So there's lots of time to be creative and to be innovative and think about how can we have access for the community and balance that also with the safety and security pieces that we look at. It is a public building. We absolutely will make sure that it's available for people as we do now. If you talk to community ed and you, I just invite you to look at the act or the calendar, the facilities calendar. And if you open up a day and you see how many people in the community use the buildings already, it's just going to be multiplied by, I don't even know what the multiplier is yet because of all the different permutations that can come from it. So I'm super excited about the amazing opportunities that are going to be open to the community because not just at the high school, but the opening up of all these other spaces. And that's before we even talk about an expanded seating in the auditorium, right? The auditorium is going to be, it's going to be the same size, but they are very creative in how they can adjust seating. So there's going to be fifty, sixty, a hundred more seats.
Yeah, we're hoping to get close to 400 seats. Yeah.
So that's about a 300 seat auditorium. Raider Hall is going to be a, it's about 115 seat small feeder, right? So if you have a community ed lecture, you can do that. You can retract those bleachers and it can become nearly, I, I think of it as the room of requirement, right? It can transform into whatever it needs to be. And so those are, that we also have a community meeting room built in that is schedulable, you know, for folks from, so there's so many different opportunities here. It is going to be really exciting. I just don't think we even have understood yet how we're just scratching the surface on the change in infrastructure that's going to be for the community.
And one other quick question. Interesting on the bus entrance, which is obviously another entrance. And then you have the back entrance for activities and then the front. So if we've got a basketball game or whatever it is, I mean, are they pulling up to the activities and dropping kids off? And is that bus entrance, is that locked off? Or how does that work?
So what I would say is that for an event in either the auditorium or any of the gymnasium spaces, probably the activity entry and the main entry are both going to be just a shorter walk, honestly, right? We will have the availability for the bus loop to be used for overflow parking. And I would imagine for a big event, the district might choose to leave the bus entry open. So that would be an option like for, you know, something that's bringing hundreds and hundreds of people. But I would imagine that in large part, the main entrance and our activity entrance would probably be prioritized. Yeah. Be a little bit of a hike if you parked all the way up there. Which I know people do.
I just thought it would be fun if you just pointed out on the diagram where the community room is because you didn't touch on that. And I think that really is an exciting feature. And sort of the whole layout of that activities entry area and what that might mean.
Sure. So you saw the renderings, but if we come in the activity entry right here and then that staircase and elevator that you saw right here. So if we pop up upstairs onto the, we call it the bridge, onto the bridge, that very first classroom will be that community classroom. So it'll be highly accessible, kind of right inside the door. It's also very, very close to bathrooms on the first level. So I think that'll be a wonderful asset that I honestly don't know all the uses for yet, but we knew it was a priority to have. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple for you, Sal.
Okay.
So since you're close to the slide that you were just showing with Jeff's question, that shows the entry and exit.
Oh, sure. You want the site? Yeah.
So what I'm seeing is that the drop off is suggested right there by the tennis courts. And then if I'm looking at that correctly, students would then walk on that sidewalk to get inside the building?
Yes. Yes, so that I think I can draw on this. So this is the path, let's say dad's dropping me off. So that would be the path that dad would take to drop me off, would come in. There is a sidewalk really all the way around all of that. I tend to see parental influence being that they want to get Jimmy to the door, right? So there's kind of a strong, like, let's get him as close as we can. But you could let anyone out of a car at any of those points and then kind of leave the way you came.
So then drop off could happen anywhere. So then drop-off could happen anywhere, you're saying, from the tennis courts all the way to the front door?
Yep, there's a path connection proposed right now. It's a little bit hard to see on here, but there's a sidewalk, like network, kind of here, goes to the north, goes to the neighborhood. It goes all the way around the bus loop, just thinking about how bikers and walkers will get to these doors as well. Yep, yep. And so it's people arriving by vehicle, but also people arriving by other transport modes.
We'll be able to use that sidewalk.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, yeah, excellent. That was my follow-up on that. And then on Slide 51, there's a wood feature, I believe is what you called it?
Yes, and I'm sorry, the slide numbers changed for me, because it's a combined presentation now. But I'm going to guess you meant.
The music.
Music, this one?
Right.
Yeah.
So I was, I was really pleased to hear about the intention to have our students' sculptures and other art pieces featured around the campus and inside. We have a great feature even downtown that was created by our students. And so I'm wondering if this wood feature, if it has some other functional, is that the storage for the instruments? Is that what you were saying? So it's.
The instrument storage is kind of in the foreground. Oops, I did not mean to do that. Oh. Oh, it says an update is available. Well, let's not do that right now. Put it back. Damn. So that wall right there is just a, it's a wood acoustic panelized material. So it does have acoustic properties. And then the kind of the things that look like cabinets in the foreground of that image were the instrument storage. Yep.
Yeah, so I was just getting at, it sounds like it has some need to look like that or to be present. I was wondering if that could be a space where additional, you know, student art could be displayed.
And above the instrument storage, and there's a, kind of around the corner that neither of these views shows very well. And then I also, when, when you say that, I think a lot about this hallway, right? Kind of the whole walk there, kind of between the auditorium and the music addition, I think, would have great opportunity for, you know, show posters or trophies or display, you know, all of that. We didn't show it that way, but I think, you know, there's quite a bit of linear length of wall space there that I think that would be really nice.
Thank you for that answer to my questions. Appreciate your presentation and all the work and effort you poured into it.
Thank you.
We're very excited.
Thanks, thanks for having us. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm going to get to the next person.
Talk about the materials where they're going to be available for people to interact with?
Yeah, so we have these materials right now for just a few days. So if people are interested, we have parent teacher conferences at the high school on Wednesday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And these physical samples will be available there, as will our partnership mold and Knutson. I'll be there as well to answer people's questions, show, we'll be showing the video, those kinds of things. So in the near term, that would be the best opportunity. Then we have to get the copy set, if you will, a materials board that will take some time to secure that. And then we can certainly bring that around and share it in a variety of different places. So right now, we have this set tonight and on Wednesday. And then they will take all of that and shrink most of it into a display board that we'll be able to show in multiple places throughout.
Will this be featured with display boards, explaining what the items are or just?
On Wednesday night, yes. There'll be four display boards that will have some of the images that you saw this evening. Obviously, you can't put all of them, but there's going to be four display boards. There's going to be the materials palette, and then there will also be that monitor with the video playing. That's on Wednesday and then as needed down the line.
All right, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we're on to Item D, which is an ad hoc committee update from myself and Jeff and Amy, who are part of the ad hoc committee, looking to refresh our evaluation tool that we, so we hold a semi and annual evaluation of Dr. Hillman. And we talked about a refreshing that tool. So I wanted to just start by saying that the motivation behind a refresh is taking into consideration some of the comments that have been made over the years about the effectiveness of that tool. Obviously, helping us understand Dr. Hillman's performance very well, and he scored very high on that tool. And so it's really more about modernizing or updating it, as Jeff brought a good word into use, refreshing it. And MSBA has vetted a very nice updated tool that's very similar to what we use now, but it's significantly pared down or more efficient, more concentrated, more focused. And so just want to thank the board for allowing the ad hoc committee to do some work on that. And as always, meeting with Dr. Hillman and giving him your feedback on the regular and not just relying on the one or twice-a-year evaluation. In the published packet, I submitted a couple of documents that have helped inform our efforts. There's also a video, so a slide deck, other materials. I went to a seminar at the leadership conference in January. So just wanted to include those couple of simple documents to help you see what we were informed by. And tonight, what we would like to do, Jeff, Amy and myself, is answer any questions and take your feedback on an idea. The first update to our evaluation tool would be to not use the current tool in December, but instead do a more informal check-in. And so what we're looking at in this new updated MSBA tool is moving to an informal check-in in the midpoint, so in December, and then a more formative annual evaluation. For our purposes, we do not think it is wise to change that tool in the middle of an academic year, but we did feel there was opportunity to not use that same tool in December, but instead use an informal check-in. We would, if you are interested in having the ad hoc committee take that first initial step, which is removing our current tool in December and doing an informal check-in, then the ad hoc committee would bring to you a process of what that, you know, what that would look like and how we would implement that at the six-month point. Outside of that, we will bring a suggestion for a new evaluation tool during this academic year to use in the next academic year. So Jeff and Amy will help answer or make comments to anything you have to say tonight in terms of direction. And we'll leave it to you. So I'll call on you and then Jeff and Amy can help answer. Any questions, comments, direction at this point? You're also welcome to grab us anytime. You want to add?
So I was a little bit of a latecomer to this process. And I have to admit, I've done the same evaluations 17 times now, and I was used to it. I was feeling uninspired by it, but even so, I sort of was defending the status quo initially, like, well, it's good enough, it's worked, you know, it gives us information. But then when I started digging into all the materials about, from MSBA, about board evaluations and superintendent evaluations, and I started, I changed my mind. I realized that it was really time to do something that allowed us as a board to really focus on certain areas and give more productive comments to Superintendent Hillman. Instead of, I often felt that I was sort of saying a lot of the similar things, just trying to find a new way of wording it time after time. The new approach that we're looking at right now does not relieve Superintendent Hillman of any of his, what is it, 43 areas and plus his focus areas, but instead allows us as a board to hone in on just a couple each year and to rotate through them. And then also to pay a lot of attention with the focus areas, which I think will give Superintendent Hillman a lot better feedback, because I think we'll, we'll know that it's up to us to really give good feedback each year and spend the time making substantive comments in a helpful way. Also, MSBA did not say you had to do two evaluations a year. So since the mid-year evaluation really could just be a check-in, it's kind of silly to evaluate him on his year-long goals when it's only halfway through the year anyway. So it made sense to just say, let's do it as a check-in, we can do it as a board, we can, there's lots of different ways from a closed session where we just talk with Matt or whether, you know, like three of us get together and have a separate meeting, whatever it would be, that we can talk about how that might work. But I think it's a good way of having more back and forth with a conversation than a static document that we put together in that mid-year point.
Yeah, I echo the points Claudia and Amy's made, and thanks for your work on the committee. Use the word, or two words, or refresh, I guess one's a. So I think that doing the same thing that we've done that's been very static over a long period of time, you know, we want to try something different. And this is also right out of the MBSA's playbook. So we're not necessarily doing anything different. We're looking, I mean, I should say we're doing, we are doing something different, but it's definitely a suggested format of what, of what to use for another evaluation. So thanks for your comments.
Great. Yes, Cory?
I'll make it short. I'm comfortable foregoing the mid-year evaluation for all the reasons stated. And I would empower the ad hoc committee to move forward with making further suggestions for us to consider for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I am as well. Just a quick question then. In the board packet, there's a workshop that's there. Any thought in terms of, is that something that the ad hoc committee thought was worthwhile in doing or?
We did look at that and obviously we're open, especially if the board would want to invest time into a workshop like that. We weren't considering it as an immediate action, but we're open.
It just, it looks like that's something they can come and deliver, is that right? In person, so that could be like a board work.
Yeah, there are, you'd be surprised, there are a lot of districts that have not done evaluations. And so that would be more of a workshop, helping a district start an evaluation process.
So it's more focused on.
Yeah.
More focused on that.
Obviously, there's always a lot of value in any kind of training and workshop.
Okay, no, that was my only question. Thanks.
All right, Jenny. And also Jenny served on part of the, part of the time on the committee, so thank you for your, your investment there, Jenny.
No problem. Thank you for your help. I'm also very comfortable with moving forward with the outcome that you guys came up with.
Great, thank you. All right, sounds nice. So we will bring a motion for you to vote on to allow us as a board to let go of the current tool for December and then bring you a process for what that informal check-in will look like. All right, thank you. All right, our next item is the consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to that consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, thank you, Amy. Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. Next is our items for individual action, and we have four. First is the policy committee recommendations. I'll take a motion first and then we can discuss and vote. Is there a motion to approve the policy committee's recommended changes to Policies 613, 620 and 707?
I move to approve the policies.
Thank you, Cory. Is there a second? Thank you, Ben. Are there any questions at this time for Dr. Hillman?
I do want to make one comment. So in regard to Policy 620, credit for learning, I want to point out a clarification that we made under the new weighted grades section. So we had inadvertently included some incorrect language in the first reading, so I do two policy readings. And so the point of this is that we're required to include a weighted grades section in this policy now. And what we needed to do is to codify our existing practice. Our existing practice was in alignment with what the expectations are, that we have weighted AP grades for a long time. And as you know, we have students who participate in PSEO and college in the schools, but now those grades were not weighted. Now, of course, the board could have a discussion about weighted grades down the line, but the purpose of this is to clarify and codify the existing practice. And so the key thing, the reason for this change is that the change didn't impact us because we did not wait either concurrent enrollment or PSEO grades. But some schools did wait those differently, and so it was an issue. And the purpose of that legislation was to bring parity to those items. So I apologize for that error that was in the first reading. We've corrected it, talked with the high school council. So what's in there now codifies and clarifies our existing practice. We can, of course, talk about weighted grades down the line, but we want to take this step to put into place what we've been doing for some time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments outside of that? Okay, then we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. Next is co-curricular ads. Is there a motion to authorize the district to hire an additional assistant boys cross-country coach at a total cost of $4,435, subject to change upon the settlement of the 2527 NEA agreement? Note that this is a request that would make the assistant coach position for the boys cross-country permanent. We will move. Thank you, Amy. Is there a second? Ben? Right, is there any discussion on this, on this additional hire? Hey, Amy?
I just want to say it's really exciting that we have 74 boys on the cross-country team. I mean, people complain that teenagers are not getting off their screens and moving around. And this is fantastic that it's increased to that level. So great work, whoever is inspiring those boys to join the team.
Anyone else comment or question about the hire? Yep.
I just, I saw the team out running around town the other day, and it was, it was a lot, it was a lot of kids. That's good.
Yeah.
Was it 74?
Probably more, because it had the girls team too, so I guess.
Great. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. Next is the proposed 2025 payable, 2026 preliminary property tax levy. The preliminary property tax levy for 2026 is required to be certified to the district's home county auditor no later than September 30th. And our district of finance, Val Mardisar, will review the levy certification timelines and analysis of that levy.
Good evening. So I'm going to review the preliminary levy. I will try to keep it brief, but give you enough information so you know we're rep. So as you know, we don't start a presentation without talking about our vision and strategic plan. So we prepare every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. I would argue that, not argue, I'm just going to say that I'm pretty sure I'm right. The levy will impact every single strategic commitment and every single benchmark. It makes up 26% of our total budget. And if you can imagine not having the resources that our community has supported and our, some of our state authorized levies, it would look very different today. So obviously, this is supporting all the work we do. So what is the levy overall? It's going to be about $27 million. Again, 26% of our total overall, just general fund budget. There's also a community's education part and a debt service portion. As a reminder for the board, this is highly regulated by the Department of Education. So there are voter-approved levies and state authorized levies. And so I think 73% of our total levy is voter-approved, which is pretty incredible when you think about a $27 million overall levy. And then, again, the revenue is used to support the general fund and the operations. Some have very specified purposes, others, like our voter-approved operating levy is open to support how we direct it within the budget that's approved. And then it also serves our debt service obligations, which we'll talk a little bit about also. So just in terms of timeline, we are doing the first step in this preliminary process. My department enters a lot of data to submit to MDE, and then they do a calculation. And we have to certify this by September 30th and then send this information to our counties. As a reminder, we touch three counties. So we are primarily in Rice County, but we do have some property in Dakota and Good Hugh Counties as well. The county will take all of the preliminary levy amounts, generate the tax statements that get mailed out in November. And then I'll be back here in December doing that final certification. And then, once we final certify, the counties take that information and send out the final tax statements in the, in the spring. In terms of our budget year, in no shocking turn of events, they don't line up. And so the taxes are obviously collected over a calendar year, the county. The county's fiscal year is a calendar year, so January through December. But our budget year doesn't start till July. That's our fiscal year. So we defer any of the payments that we get prior to June 30th to the next fiscal year. So what we are certifying right now is based on estimates of what we think is going to be needed for the 2627 school year. So this is just kind of a snapshot of what the proposed levy looks like. So of that 27 million, 17.8 is the general fund, obviously the most significant portion. 8.9 million is debt service, and then about 655,000 is for community ed. And then that smaller pie chart to the right is what the 17 million for the general fund is made up of. So you can see half of that is just our voter-approved referendum. Again, we live in a super supportive community. The capital projects levy is 2.2 million, again, a voter-approved. And then the state authorized is 6.7. And so these are the required categories that we're, that we have to share. And so you can see the totals by fund, which we just covered, and the percent change. Both the general fund and debt service are declining slightly. General fund is primarily related to declining enrollment because most of the formulas are tied to enrollment. Community ed is increasing. Obviously, it looks pretty significant, 240,000. And then I'll talk in a little more detail about that next. The voter-approved and other, again, is that just that breakout of what's voter-approved or state authorized? And like I said, 73%, $20 million is voter-approved. If you're comparing to last year, that looks like a pretty significant jump. And that's due to the passing of the Reimagine Northfield High School bond. And then the subtotals by tax base, the referendum market value is just the tax base in which our actual voter-approved referendum is allocated against. There's some differences between, for ag property, about if you get charged for referendum or not. And then net tax capacity is all the other levy calculations. So overall, the levy is going down about 271,000 or 0.98%. So this gives you a little more context, terms you've heard and seen. And so we can talk a little bit more detail in the general fund, which is the largest portion. And so significant changes between last year's certified and the pay 26. The other post-employment benefits, so you've probably heard me refer to that as OPEB, is decreasing slightly, like 111,000. And again, last year when I presented this, we did have a pretty substantial severance payment for our teacher retirees, 426,000. We have a sunset clause that allows us to levy for those payments, and so last year's was higher. We did not have as many retiree severance payments this year, so that number's coming down a little bit. Adjustments for pay 20, that's supposed to say pay 25, I think. Pay 24 was really high. Pay 25 came down. Again, we're catching back up to, we had some very conservative estimates for enrollment during the pandemic due to the uncertainty of where students were going to land. Now we're a little bit more stabilized in our projection. So those adjustments should be leveled out. We don't like to see large swings there because that means we did not estimate something as tightly as we could have. The community add increase, 243,000. That is primarily made up of the school age care levy. So we are able to levy dollars to support students' specific accommodations and needs in our school age care program. So we do have a few students coming into the program this coming year who have some pretty kind of one-on-one needs. And so this levy supports being able to make sure they're successful in that program. And then debt service is decreasing. Again, that seems counterintuitive because we just passed the bond. But it's actually, we're required by law to levy that 105%. That 5% builds up as we pay our debt. And the state does a calculation to take our average three-year fund balance. And when it gets to a certain point, they'll reduce that funds, reduce the funds so that we aren't levying as much, basically giving that money back to the taxpayers, if that makes sense. So overall, $271,000 down, 0.98%. So this is what the levy looks like over five years. Again, pay 25 is that voter-approved Reimagine Northfield High School bond increase. Our five-year average is 6.6%, I think, 6.67%. So overall, pretty reasonable, again, going down for the coming fiscal year. And then this is the estimate that others put together on the potential tax impact. Obviously, with the levy going down, we expect taxpayers to see a slight savings, so around 4.5%, depending on your property level. Again, I couldn't fit all of the language on here, but there's a disclaimer on the bottom that says this is assuming your house value stays the same, your market value. So obviously, we know that's not the case, but assuming it did, taxpayers would see a decrease in their school taxes on their tax statement. I think that is all the points I wanted to highlight. But if you have any questions, I will gladly answer them.
Thank you, Val. Got a question.
So are we asking for the max then? Has that number changed?
It has changed slightly. We are, thank you, certifying at the max. And really, all that means is when they finalize it, that we can't exceed that anymore. We can always under levy between now and December, but we've typically always certified at the max.
So the difference between the max four years ago and now is what? Is it miniscule or is it a big percentage?
So if you look at pay 23, we certified 21.1 million. So really, it's, it's the increase in the debt service for the most part. And the capital projects levy, I think, would be in there too, as the big increases. But any of the significant changes were voter-approved.
Anyone else question, comment? Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there a move to certify to county auditors the 2025 payable 2026 preliminary levy limitation and certification at the maximum authority?
They'll move.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Thank you, Corey. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And finally, we have MSBA platform recommendation resolution. The board has requested to authorize the superintendent to submit a resolution to MSBA for consideration as part of their 2026 legislative platform to request the Minnesota legislator broaden the definition of operating capital to include essential training that supports the adoption of new, high-quality curriculum materials. I will take a motion first, and then we can discuss who will move.
I move.
Thank you, Corey. Your second? Thank you, Jenny. Hey, Dr. Hillman, do you want to share some comments?
Yeah, so we, in my time here, we have never availed ourself of this process where we can submit a potential resolution to the School Boards Association for Inclusion in their legislative platform. We know that we are entering a time of austerity. We do not expect significant new money from the state. We do not expect significant new money from the federal government. And so what we are looking at is to be able to use the funds that we already have in a more flexible way. So for operating capital, if we can purchase the textbooks, right? You've heard a lot tonight from Christopher, our new high school principal, about how impressed he is with the high-quality curriculum materials that we're working. But we know that research shows that teachers need around 50 hours of training to really wield those materials in a way that is skillful. And so it puts pressure on the general fund, it puts pressure on our Title II budget to have to use separate funds to do it. So I'm asking that they expand the definition of operating capital to include training only for the materials that you've purchased in that particular year. And so when you approve this, this is not like it just happened. I wish it, if we just approved it and went to the legislature, fixed it, that's not the way it works. We're hopeful that MSBA would include this in their platform, something I will advocate personally at the legislature this year. But if we get MSBA behind it, it's an example of how do we use the funds that we already have more flexibly to meet the needs of students and teachers in our district. So if the board would be so inclined to approve it, then I will submit, it requires that the board approve the resolution, and then I can submit it on your behalf after the meeting.
Okay, so tonight, we're just approving, authorizing you to submit that resolution?
That is correct, yes.
And then you'll bring the resolution to us as well?
Well, then it's about, then it's up to MSBA. So we submit it, and then MSBA puts it in with all the other resolutions that have been submitted, and they determine what ends up in their legislative platform. So the only action the board needs to take is to authorize me to submit it.
Great, exciting. Okay, question, Corey?
I believe MSBA is finalizing its platform this week. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's due on the 24th, this submission.
So if we prove it tonight, you're on it tomorrow morning?
I'm not leaving until I submit it. That's why I laid it out the way I did. I can copy and paste.
Okay, Amy?
It seems like a very sensible resolution to propose. So I think the, hopefully, the legislature will be looking for ways to help the school, and this is an easy way to do it without having to provide more money. And I think it'd be great if MSB gets on board. But my question is, how does this then get made into law? I mean, don't we have to get a representative to introduce it into the legislature? And do you have a process for that, or what are you thinking of the next steps would be?
So this is really a handoff to MSBA, right? NSBA, they have their paid lobbyists, and they have a number of ways, people who will sponsor bills. So if this were to make it into the legislative platform, the MSBA lobbyists, and I'm assuming lobbyists for some of the other educational organizations, would work with those lobbyists to draft, they go through the process of having the nonpartisan folks who work at the Capitol draft a bill, they find sponsors, sponsor sign on, then it goes through the committee hearing process. It's the old, I'm just a bill, right, from the 1970s, Schoolhouse Rock. And so, yes, there's a number of other steps, maybe it doesn't even get taken up this year. But I think, again, this is the message of, we need more flexibility with the funding we already have. So several steps, all of which you just shared.
Very good. All right, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. I'm all for this type of process, especially if it's free. I'm assuming there's no fee.
No charge, yep, no charge, yep.
Sounds great. But I, because we've, this is the first time our district has ever taken part in this process. I just, I'm more curious, so I just have some curiosity questions about, on MSBA's end. How, how long or how many years have they been taking on this process where they accept resolutions from school districts and then they do all the work?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Jenny, in terms of the history of MSBA's component in this. But I do know that, you know, MSBA, for, I feel safe in saying decades, has been the voice of school boards at the Capitol. So I feel very comfortable saying in the last three decades, for sure. I don't know how long, how far it goes back. Of course, the way that we lobby and advocated the legislature has changed over the years. But one of MSBA's key roles was to elevate the voice of school boards in a unified way at the Capitol. So I can certainly find the history, you know, more than that, if that's of interest. But I feel comfortable saying for decades.
Thank you. Very good. Corey?
And just to tie into what Matt said, you know, they want voices from board members and boards throughout the state. So last week, they had three different meetings, virtual meetings, for board members to contribute to potential platform. So Maggie and I were on a call last Friday, talking about some of the challenges we've had in our district with K3 suspensions and things like that with funding. So they're developing their platform, and they want to hear voices of all different stakeholders. So I think Dr. Hillman doing this is great. I appreciate you taking up the mantle to do that. And we'll see if it makes the final cut, because just even last Friday with the hour, there was probably 20 ideas. And for it to be effective, they probably need to focus on four or five things. So we'll see if this makes the cut, but if not, there's always next year, right?
Anyone else? Good comments, questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Item eight is our items for information. We have a retired educators luncheon coming up Friday, October 24th. It'll be at 11:30 a.m. at Ruth's on Stafford. RSVP to Kelly no later than October 15th. Our future meetings are Tuesday, October 14th, as Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 13th, Monday. Monday, October 27th, 6 p.m. in this regular, it's a regular board meeting in this boardroom. And Monday, November 10th, also a regular school board meeting. That is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a move to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second? Who will second the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Corey. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.